Good afternoon. Welcome to the Wednesday afternoon meeting of B O C C. Looks like I'm looking at our agenda. The first item of business is a bid opening, so we'll turn it over to the clerk. Do that?
This is a bid opening. This is the bid opening for the 2024 Headquarters Landfill Transportation of Rock Materials. We have two bids. This bid is from J L Storedall and Sons Incorporated. The bid total is three hundred and fifteen thousand, forty-five dollars and fifty cents. The last bid. This bid is for Penny Excavating LLC. The bid total is three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. That's the conclusion of the bid.
They rarely get that close, don't they? That's pretty close.
Yeah, it is. Okay, we'll move forward. I see Public Works has an agenda today.
Sean worked really hard trying to keep all those balls up in the air.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, we have a short presentation from the Purchasing Department on some changes that are coming into state law. Today I have Ashley Clausen with me here, our buyer, and she'll be leading the presentation for you.
Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, Ashley Clausen, Purchasing Services. As Sean said, we're here to talk to you about some changes that were introduced to R C W via Senate Bill five-two-six-eight. These are specifically for small works and they go into effect next week. July first. Just a little bit of background, small works is, it's probably a term that you recognize primarily from facilities maintenance agreements and projects. Public Works, the small works are public works that are estimated to cost under three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not to be confused with Public Works, the department, Public Works in R C W are defined as construction, building, renovation, repair, remodels, alterations, or improvements of real property. And then, R C W thirty-nine oh four one fifty-five further defines thresholds and procedures for obtaining quotes for those small works projects via the Small Works roster, which is the pre-established list of contractors, consultants, and service providers. So it just gives us some more leeway in lieu of a full bid process.
So it's a quick question on, all our questions are quick. If a contract came back to you, I mean, if you think you're going to bid something in small roster and everything comes back to you above that, you have to go out again?
No, we do not have to go out again. If it is reasonable to believe that it is going to be under this three hundred and fifty thousand and we have legitimate estimates, we do not have to go back out.
And you get audited if you had reason to believe and it came in, but there were eighty-five percent increase in price because of change orders, does that put you in the doghouse?
No, that, that will not. Change orders, as long as they are after the fact and they were not, it was not reasonable to believe they should have been part of the project to begin with.
Okay, who decides the reasonable?
That is where we have to really work with the State Auditor's Office. We use M R S C a lot to, to dance on those lines.
But, but the ultimate, ultimate decision is going to be the county engineer based on advice. I mean, she's the one that signs off.
Well, yes, for those projects and then for facilities, it would be our team. Okay, so what is changing? Currently, the statute provides for a limited public works process. This is for projects that are estimated to be under fifty thousand. Right now, that process, we can pull the roster and we can invite three bids from the list. We can narrow down by geographic location. We can, we have pretty, we have a lot of leniency on how we can invite those three. And then also under two hundred and fifty thousand, we can request bids from five on the roster. We must, anything over that two hundred and fifty, we have to invite bids from everyone on the roster, which can be, for general contractors, that can be hundreds. The upcoming change.
So if it's two hundred and fifty-five thousand, you have to send out fifty bids because there's going to be at least fifty people on that list?
If it is over two hundred and fifty, we have to invite, we have to send the invitation to bid to everyone that's on the roster.
Right, and that list could be up to fifty?
It could be hundreds.
Have you had to do that?
Every, for over two fifty.
Have you had to?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. So the bigger projects, like some of the roofs, the paving, the, the ones that we know are going to be over two fifty, we have to invite from everyone.
You have no option at all? I mean, that's almost insane.
It gets better.
So we always have the option to do a formal R F P two outside of the Small Works roster. And so we could do that advertising and go through the process of that. This is more of a simplified process using the Small Works roster.
Total all-in cost effort, it seems like at above two fifty, you're, if the list is long enough, you might as well do the R F P. Am I out to lunch on that? Okay, thank you.
Usually from that two fifty to three fifty, we would go out for a full, full bid anyway.
Yeah.
So then now moving forward, starting next week, that option for the limited public works, the anything under two fifty is going completely away. We will have no option to invite three bids. We will have no option to invite five bids. Starting next week, if the project is under one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have two options. We can now direct negotiate, which I'll get into on the next slide. We have the option to direct negotiate or invite from everyone. So even if it's forty-five thousand dollars, even if it's sixty thousand, if we do not direct negotiate, then we have to invite bids from everyone.
Am I correct in thinking that the size of the list goes inversely as a dollar amount? That is the smaller bids are going to have a lot more people that can do it?
The list right now, it's by commodity and M R S E is actively working on drilling down that list and narrowing it down. Right now, what contractors will do, they will get on M R S E roster, they can click a button that says sign up for every single commodity, even if I don't do it. You might have A B M janitorial in general contracting or concrete. So M R S E is working on narrowing down that list to actually get them in these specific categories.
As of now, you'd have to send the A B M janitorial and the contractor, the solicitation.
Yes.
Wow.
I get, I get responses all the time. I don't know why you're sending this to me. I don't do this.
Are you on the small roster as an excavator?
Yes, so now that the fifty, under two fifty, that all goes away. If it's under a hundred and fifty thousand, we can direct negotiate, we can, or invite bids from all on the roster. And then if it's over one fifty, we must invite bids from all on the roster now.
So you gain some flexibility with it going up to one fifty, but there's a much narrower discretion on.
We gain a little flexibility, but they've also put some more restrictions in place with that in the direct negotiation. So what does this mean for us? For example, we've got an office remodel project at the Hall of Justice that is going to cost forty-five thousand dollars. As of today, that is going to be a limited public work under fifty thousand dollars. We would create our scope, we could solicit three bids, award to the lowest bidder, and we go on about our business. Starting on Monday, we create our scope and our two options are solicit the entire roster or direct negotiate. Here is where the additional parameters come in for direct negotiation. If there are six or more certified small businesses, we must choose a contractor that is one of those small businesses. We have no other options. If there are five or fewer, we can choose any contractor on that list. And then, so M R S C, when we run our roster, they will now essentially split them up between small businesses that are certified with the O M W B E and everyone else. And it just depends on how many we have on our roster as to which direction we must go. And then we also have to notify all the diverse businesses on the roster when an award is made. We have to now go back and report all of those bid responses. If they were a small business, if there were a small business, if there was no bid, what their bids were, we have to now go back into M R S E, report all of that to the state. And we have to document equitable rotation of the opportunities. Prior to next week, we have not had any guidelines as to what equitable distribution is. Now, we must create a policy. It has to be enforceable. It has to be trackable. And we've got to put that in place because they, they want something to audit us against now. Yes. So the, the diverse businesses are, the O M W B E has created a new section called the Public Works Small Business Enterprise. And that is how these businesses get certified as a small business and it's its own. There is no, correct. They do, yes, they do all of that. They do the vetting. So we're going to start from the beginning?
So, so again, the diverse businesses would be those that are minority or women owned?
Yes.
Okay.
But to be part of the Public Works Small Business Enterprise, there is no requirement to be minority-owned or women business. That is just the reporting that we have to follow up on. We have to make sure we notify all of them now.
But you have to show rotation, so you do have to keep track?
Yes.
And, and who gets the, the extra contract work?
Yes.
Is there any way you can circumvent the, I mean, all we care, or all I care for the county, and I think these two gentlemen would agree is, can you do the job effectively at the price that is quite acceptable? This oftentimes ties you down. Is there something we can do to avoid that? Like go, go out for an R F P every time?
Yeah, we can, absolutely. We can do a full bid every time.
You're still constrained with having to have minority content? Like I think we talked about big construction, you have to have so many subcontractors and all that?
So if we do a full invitation to bid, the the direct negotiation, small business, and under six, over six, that does not apply. This is only if we choose to direct negotiate.
Well, it's a good thing I trust that you folks will keep the end goal in mind, which is whatever is best for the county under the circumstances.
Do you, do you have any idea what, what they're trying to solve here? When I look at it, it just looks like somebody's political agenda. So you know if there's something they're trying to solve?
Yeah, so the next page is a.
Funny you should ask. So now the why. The state says that in doing all of this, it is, we're going to increase administrative efficiency by adding the direct negotiation, improving transparency with centralized data collection. There will be more small business utilization and will, it will, excuse me, it will increase the number of small projects being awarded to small contractors. They're also trying to make M R S C the one-stop shop between government agencies and contractors so that we're pushing more projects through there.
This is a little bit like when we want to allocate meals on wheels, we have only one place we can go.
Yeah. It's a power thing. I suppose there's no sunset that, or no requirement to look at this to see if it actually does these things and get rid of it if it doesn't.
Are you looking for trouble?
I'm being facetious here, but.
They did tell us when we went to our training that it is likely going to change very quickly. It will, it will evolve. It will, things will change. They also told us that for this, for the foreseeable future, there are no auditing standards that have been set for this just yet. So next year's audit, when we go through, should be quite interesting. So then moving forward into our next.
Just a quick question on that last statement. That's just the politeness they offer you or they're trying to advise you, don't do something because it will change on you?
That was just the politeness they were offering because they said when they rolled this out, even the State Auditor's Office was scratching their head, trying to figure out how they were going to hold everyone accountable.
But for now, you, you follow this? You, you can't predict what.
So as of July first, we will, we will not have the purchasing policy in place yet. So we cannot do the direct negotiation. So as of Monday, we will just be sending out a full solicitation every time. Just so that we are in line.
So how do you send those out? By U S mail?
They go by email.
Email?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's not so bad.
It's not so. But when there's more than, more than a hundred contractors, it gets tricky because our email will only let us send a hundred at a time or it blocks it.
Well, the opportunity for mistake is huge. You didn't put me on the list, I'm suing you.
So then coming up, I am currently working on drafting resolutions for authorizing the implementation of the new Small Works roster and the process. R C W states that we have to have the resolution in place before we can do all of these things. I'm also working on creating a small business utilization plan and updates to our purchasing policy. All of those are being drafted and reviewed. and updates to our purchasing policy. All of those are being drafted and reviewed and we should have. What is our timeline on that?
As soon as we finalize review and legal review on that, we'll get a red line and a summary copy to the board to review. We are trying to address some of the issues that Bishop Morrison brought up on how we can do the best for the county still and fall within these guidelines. And so it's an ongoing process and we hope to have that to you in the next few weeks.
So I'm, I'm curious if, if say, we have ten million dollars in, in contracts that we have to go through and get, do bids of one kind or another. What percent now do we rely on the small works roster? Is that a, are we talking fifty percent of our contracted work is, is small? Or is it ten percent?
I would say the majority of facilities projects can be solicited using the small works roster. We've had some of the bigger ones. I think the roof for, because we combined Health and Human Services and and which one? In the annex. I would say the majority can rely on the small works roster.
And the answer to your question would depend on, did you mean on dollar value or count? I think you meant count.
Well, if the goal is efficiency and administration at a certain point, it's too much work to bother with a small works roster process.
Yeah, so it's count.
You know, and, and.
So then you just end up hurting the small businesses.
Well, then that's exactly what the state needs to know. They're trying to help small businesses. But if they make it so complicated that we don't choose that option, it's on them, it's not on us.
They need to stay out of business. This is where our attorneys need to plug their ears. What if I just draw a picture and we send a resolution back to Olympia?
Yeah, there, there's some intrinsic, lots of problems. One, the rotation policy. How can, how can you do something reasonable there? Ouija board.
That was one of the things that was brought up in our training. It, that was put on by MRSC and the state auditors and all of these organizations were there. And they were asking the audience how they would do it. They were taking a poll and I feel like it was because they didn't know what to tell us to do. And I said, plug it in and do a random generator because we don't have. I mean, that one is going to be tricky.
Have any small businesses complained that we've ignored them or any of that type of thing?
Up to this point, no.
I like your thinking. The random number generator is the first thing that came to mind. If we're gonna be arbitrary on this thing, let's be independently arbitrary.
And that was one of the things that someone brought up was that, you know, just start at the top of the list with A every time. Well, if you run your list four different times, if that same contractor's on the top, how do you determine what you're gonna do next? Like what, you have to get too far into.
Be concerned about that because I'm gonna change the company name.
Just put ones and stars and.
Everybody will be A. Triple A. Triple A excavating.
For group A excavating, got one up on you.
And so that, that is, that is what's going on in a nutshell.
So, so solicit, so the solicitation of bids from, from everyone just involves sending emails to everybody saying, hey, you're invited to a bid. That's a fairly, I mean, I can imagine, I know how many emails I get from, from one solicitation for a campaign and it's just multiplied out of control. It ought to be relatively easy. So just do hundred percent solicitation all the time. That's the simplest.
The, the, the problem is when I get a hundred solicitations, I now have a hundred obligations to be totally bulletproof in my decision between the hundred. So I, I can't just, like, I'm sure you and I get, I get over five hundred emails a day. I look at the titles and ninety of them just got flushed. You can't do that.
Cannot do that.
And, and so a, a good example.
So how much do you actually charge for an application fee?
We do not.
Why not? Is that not allowed? Is it, is it against the law?
I don't know that.
Because that would, that would cut down on the people that.
I like your thinking, but I know it's.
I mean, we charge application fees downstairs, building and planning all the time, right? So a hundred and fifty dollar, I mean, I, and I have no idea what would be realistic, but you know, when we run for office, it's one percent to, to file. Of course, they're, they're bidding, so. But.
You, you, you might be able to not do it by getting an outright non-refundable fee, but you might be able to ask them to post a bond that is refundable.
And we, we do. So bid bonds are required by the state over a certain amount for the smaller projects. We don't always do bid bonds because they have to pay for those. Under, I think thirty five thousand, we can waive that bid bond. But the bid bond.
That's for performance though, right?
No, so the bid bond is, the performance bond is done after for the actual performance of the work. The bid bond is for the bigger projects, it is submitted with the bid paperwork. And that just says, I'm submitting my bid and if I am incredibly underbid, I won't pull my bid. It sticks. So if they bid five thousand, the next bid up said ten thousand, oh, well, I'm leaving money on the table, I'm pulling my bid. But bid bonds are a good way.
Again, I, I find that's kind of cute.
So if, if we have bids come back and we require the bid bond, the bid bond says that they are submitting this bid and if they are the low bidder, they will sign the contract.
Right, they can't just say, oh, forget it.
Yes, they can't find out later that they left money on the table and say, oh, well, I don't want that. I'll, I'll pull my bid.
How much does it cost them to do a bid bond?
It's, it's based on the amount of their bid with their, it's usually a percentage of whatever their bid is.
But like, right now, when, when you have to process any of these hundred bids, say, it takes you labor time and there's risk involved. Do they have that? Is there a counterpart on their side too? I, I'm, I'm trying to get to what you were trying to do. Let's get some skin in the game so we don't have a lot of garbage.
Well, my, 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 my suggestion was kind of leading to the idea, you're telling us you're gonna need more help. If we all of a sudden have an avalanche of new bids, it's gonna, it's gonna cost more personnel for us just to administer. So much for the efficiency of administration argument.
And we do, we do have someone else in purchasing and we are starting to get her, actually this week, we are starting to get her all trained up on small works rosters. She is doing a bid right now that she's getting out. So we have, we have, we have good help.
So, so we're down, but eighty thousand dollars a year for FTE? Plus, plus Bennys?
Yeah.
That should be recovered through the application fees.
And, and coming back to this, to combat some of the items that maybe like, we need to put a new plugin somewhere, the small, small products like that. We may be converting to, over to a as needed contract basis. So we'll go out for one electrician for the year with a not to exceed value for an as needed kind of contract instead of doing these small three bids products during the year and other things that can help combat some of the necessity or repetitiveness of this new legislation here.
I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to hear then that the collective bargaining agreement is cooperative and allow you to do that. I'm assuming there's flexibility to do that.
I don't know, this thing just didn't smell right. It just seems like it's a political agenda. And it, if it doesn't go the way whoever put this together wants it to go, they're gonna strap more stuff on you. It's just typical nonsense from government, drives me nuts, but.
You mean the double down theory?
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're following a, a policy and a program that was somebody else's political agenda. I mean, the distribution of resources is what politics is all about. So who gets what? So we were just shifting the, the goalposts through the parameters of, of the list. I was assuming we had a fairly efficient process right now. Yes, there were a couple of requirements to do minority owned and, and women owned businesses. But this doesn't look like a cost savings at all.
We'll see.
So.
See how it goes.
So since the state auditor is not offering any guidance, so why don't we just not do anything? Let our legislators know?
We don't want to play.
Well, contractors who, who follow the rules downstairs play, pay ahead of time, pay, pay to play. And if, you know, if. So.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely look into that option and see if that's available to us and report back with you and get our policies updated, a summary to y'all and a red line of that policy as we can get some opinions and move forward with y'all.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we probably should, we probably should be in communication with our six state legislators and say, this is what you've given us. Were you aware? Although our legislators probably are very much aware.
Yeah. Anyhow, that was a nice, clear presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not at fault for the content of.
Don't shoot the messenger.
So we're ready for some good news?
Oh. Talking about state agencies we love, we're gonna go to the Department of Ecology next. Mike Moss, Public Services Director. We have on their PUD landfill project update. We visited with the PUD earlier today and we're in pause mode for the gas to energy project at the landfill due to some requirements put in place for the permit from the Department of Ecology. I'll let Sean maybe explain a little bit what the requirements are.
So in the gas energy plant, there's a process to pre-treat the gas coming into it. What they call Caddox. Certain processes would require a significant amount of capital and ongoing O and M costs that may make the project much more expensive on an annual basis moving forward. Ecology has been insisting on that technology put in. And we are trying to not have it. And so that's kind of an impasse on that currently. I believe the district is working on that with them and continuing down the path to make this project viable.
So i- it's a permit that the PUD has to get for the processor?
Correct. It's the PUD's ecology permit for that.
Presumably I can put a sensor on the tailpipe of the generator and say, oh, you didn't clean your gas.
Pretty much.
And they're talking about pre-cleaning rather than post-cleaning.
Correct, yeah. Gas conditioning.
So are they, are they doing that now with our huge stacks?
That's what's so, that's what's so odd about it, that Ecology is putting roadblocks to make us stop this project instead of producing energy for forty five hundred homes, they'd rather flare it. Which doesn't make a lot of sense.
They prefer the flare.
Yeah.
Makes zero sense.
Yeah. And so.
The Department of Ecology.
Yes.
So are you talking to regional folks or is this Olympia speaking?
My understanding is this is Olympia speaking.
So do we get any help from our regional folks, the folks that we've been working with and meeting with?
I believe they've engaged a task to some consultants that are familiar with this, our local other legislators as well, and the local other departments that have some sort of influence here. It's just a process they're trying to get through.
Exploring other options in order to put that gas in a in the gas line, if you chose that path, you'd have to clean it. Is this the same equipment?
It's, I believe it's a different type of equipment, a different process for the, the internal combustion engines.
And my guess, based on what you're saying, is that this cleaning thing is a five million dollar piece of equipment?
That's what we initially heard. I mean, some of our conversations, they're more worried about monthly O and M cost of keeping this equipment and keeping the conditions where they're, they're asked to keep them at. The, the levels are being asked for the preconditioning are such high levels that they don't know if the equipment they have would continuously keep it at that level where they'd have to do some major renovations along the way or have some major monthly and yearly O and M cost. Is there, they're talking about today up to a hundred thousand dollars per month to keep it to the level that the state or the Ecology is asking them to keep it at?
I, I believe that's in consumable items that get used through the process.
I'm still confused. That's, you, you buy this piece of equipment and it has, it requires a hundred K a month maintenance?
Of consumables within that process.
Consumables, right. Oh, chemicals and stuff they inject into it or something?
Absorbents, chemicals, things of that nature.
Produce any waste material that they have to dispose of?
It would be, yes.
So it goes through a filter or does something?
It would go back into the landfill.
Go back into the landfill and then we re-burn it or something?
And we can certainly bring PUD back in here, their engineers, you guys met them at one of our Tuesday meetings to give you more details. We literally, we talked to them this morning at ten o'clock. So we haven't got all the details. It is asked, put on pause and actually our contractor agreement with the PUD for the exclusivity for the gas rights ends fairly soon. So we may be coming back to do a short extension to make sure they get the answers they want from Ecology.
So regardless of whether we can reuse this equipment or not, if you, the click at that guy's decided it was more economical or more, more financially beneficial to go put the gas in the pipeline. And we've looked at that here and with this new wrinkle, does that shift the decision?
We had that discussion this morning. I don't know if we have the volume yet for that, but that's certainly something we discussed in house.
And I know we have a contract to kick in some money. We haven't sent anything yet.
No, we have not.
If this falls through, that falls through too.
Correct. Yes, it does.
Well, that, if you call that good news that you're providing us, I'm not sure whether, isn't it time to adjourn?
I don't think I want to hear the next item.
I think Chip Seal, that's gonna be good news.
That's great news, actually, yeah. I know we talked a bit, a little bit about Chip Seal on Monday, but we finished up the Kelso region, moving to Cast Rock after the Fourth of July. It's just right on schedule. Yeah, everything. I drove the roads right behind the, the ship spreader yesterday with the pilot card. And I once again had zero pickup in the area. So it's been continuing to go well, knock on wood.
I, I came through what, yesterday morning, just the day after and it almost looks like you could just sweep off the gravel and you'd be ready to go.
Correct, yeah. So we're spinning today and tomorrow, getting all the loose gravel off in the Kelso region starts fresh after the Fourth.
Let's hope the weather holds.
Yes.
You can't do it in the rain, can you?
Correct, no. Yeah, we won't be doing anything tomorrow. And the weather's been absolutely perfect, you know, mid seventies, low eighties.
It can be, it can be too hot.
Yeah, I mean, we, we still pave our Chip Seal, but it gets in the nineties. Yeah, I mean, we we still pave our chip seal, but it gets in the nineties. It's it's challenging for staff, equipment. But this new oil, though, we still might be able to get away with it. A lot of times you might have to put sand down when it's that warm to keep it from getting too tacky. So we have sand trucks on site usually. This year we've only used sand one time, which is great, right off the beginning.
When I was I'd work summers for the city of Centralia when I was going to college. And we go out and oil, I don't know if they do it this way anymore. I think they call it sniveling and we'd stand behind a truck full of gravel, they pour some oil and we just start shoveling.
Yep, we still sniffy, sniffy patches and do smaller sections with that, correct? Yeah, we'll call you up AAA excavating when we need some.
When I fall over from a heart attack, you gotta deal with that.
He's willing to, he's willing to work for those college wages, though, it sounds like.
Eighteen bucks an hour.
Yeah.
Okay, Savannah Clement, Public Services. I just have an H O J air quality update. We're hoping to give these kind of weekly, if not in person, but via email. We met this morning at eight AM with all of the interested parties and risk spearheaded a lot of the conversation, but essentially we've received a summary results from the twenty four air sample testing that was were conducted last week, I believe. And no real alarming results, which is good. No required evacuations of the building. There will be some kind of continued remediation. That northwest stair wall continues just to be the one to take care of and we do have plans in place to move forward and doing the remediation. I don't know if Kathy, oh, she left. Just kidding. I just didn't know she had anything else to add. We hope to present the summary results as well as the health officer report and the full results to members of the H O J and the board, hopefully tomorrow. So you guys will have that information soon.
So any idea what caused the problem?
Water. And water caused the problem. We did have, I think we gave a brief update, but we did have Weather Guard come and do all the gutter cleaning, seal up all of the potential possible leak sources. And then we're also moving forward with looking into an envelope specialist in the near future, hopefully next week. To take a look at some of the crevices in that building. If you look at the gutter system from the street, you can see the gutters actually go back into the building itself on the inside. So without a scope, you know, and some pretty intensive, which we're going to do, researching. You can't really tell where that water is going. And that north hallway, though, is very dry now. Our dehumidifiers that we have going in there clear water and it's very minimal compared to a few weeks ago. So there's progress. The smells dissipated in that hallway. So we're moving forward. It's getting better, but we do still have some remediation to do.
Yeah, we did some dye test in the gutter system, but a little challenging without really running water coming in the stairwell. It was really just over time that absorbed in those concrete blocks. We think we know we patched a few openings, especially on the overhang that left over HVAC holes that were never capped. Clean some gutters up there, but that's why we talked about maybe bringing a specialist in just to kind of give a look at that building. Because we won't really know if we fixed it till probably two months into the winter to see if we had some continuous rain. So
Don't the gutters just go down into that murky sawdusty muck that caused problems before?
Goes somewhere.
It goes somewhere. It was, yeah, I don't know if it's for security purposes when they built that back in the seventies, but all the downspouts, everything turns inside the building. So it's challenging to find exactly, and there's a lot of them. To find out exactly which one might be dislodged inside, which is causing the water in the north area.
To keep inmates from climbing.
Exactly. That's what we were thinking.
Yeah.
What you said about water being the problem reminds me of a W C Fields story. The poor man was stuck for forty days and forty nights in the desert with only food and water. He was a known alcoholic.
W C Fields, yeah.
He had a big old bulbous nose.
Any other questions on the air quality updates and remediation progress? Again, we'll continue to keep the board update updated weekly on that one. I might just pass through some museum lighting upgrades. This came before the fencing option. We're still working on the fencing option. The solutions that we have in mind now aren't pretty. So we're kind of trying to get creative there on that ADA accessibility with fencing that in, but we were able to work with contractor locally who did do some great upgrades there on the lighting.
Wow, these are the new lights.
Yes, we took those last night.
Light the sky is, this is, this is bright.
Yeah, this is only at nine fifteen. I took these last night, so it wasn't really really dark out. It was twilight. So
Oh, it was there?
No, it was there and it was, it was, they installed these Friday. So we've only had them there for a few nights, but no issues yet.
Quite a difference.
Yeah, we had eight eight more lights in there and we'll we'll take it from, see if we need to add more of it. I don't know if adding more is going to help if they're going to do things, they're probably going to do it no matter what, because it is pretty bright there. As Savannah said, our probably next step would be fencing. It was just challenging, but this is the first step. And if it works, great. If not, we'll move on to the next step.
Is it activated by motion?
They're going to be, they they're waiting for the sensors to come in for a couple of these. Right now they're just on and off by
Switch.
Actually, it's not by sensor, what we've talked about before, just the daylight sensor.
Like dusk to dawn?
Yeah, but they'll be on a, a couple of them, we're going to put on a moving sensor, motion sensor. Maybe to startle them and keep them away.
Yeah. I hope it, I hope it helps.
Yeah.
So we don't have to resort to fencing.
Correct. Yes, a little more cost effective this way, but if we have to, we'll continue down that path.
Little butler, your captain will help too.
What's that?
A little butler, your captain will help also. It'll keep everybody away. It smells so bad. Better living through chemistry.
I have one miscellaneous item. Last week I got invited to a meeting at Longview City Hall regarding homelessness, homeless warming shelters. They're looking for spots around the county or the city. Apparently the churches they've used in the past have backed out of having them as a warming center. They were looking at different options around the city and Apostolate County buildings. I told them initially, I've arrived front, this will have to go through the B O C C, but they they're really interested in just one of our facilities and that was the boathouse. The more we talked about it, it was going to be challenging for them at the boathouse because when I started asking about requirements, they need like a secure area for people to put shopping carts and bikes and be able to lock things down. And so I don't know if they're shying away from the boathouse, but I just want to make sure. I knew it was your guys' decision, not mine, but they asked someone from facilities to be at the meeting. And so if you guys have thoughts or ideas down the road, want to pass me a via email or have the conversation now. I don't know of any other properties offhand, other than the ones that they mentioned was boathouse, but I didn't think even the location, if that was even an option, if you guys want to go that way, being so close to the sheriff's office and others would probably be not well attended, but
This was in Longview?
This is a long piece. I think it was the homeless task force that talked about the warming shelters. I think it was their their committee. So just want to make sure you guys knew I attended that meeting on behalf of the county, but certainly did not offer any facilities up.
No, I'm not going to say it. Okay.
So that's all I have. Anything for us?
But I do have an excellent idea. But I want to say it.
All right. Thank you.
Good.
Before the two thirty, maybe we can talk about, and I think you're probably all familiar with this, it sounds like the little map I gave you.
Yeah, but I'd forgotten if you could do a refresher?
Huh?
I I'd forgotten the details, just a quick refresher.
They wildlife is working with what you see in this whole magenta or whatever square is all Warehouser property and over time they would like to purchase that from Warehouser over time. What they're talking about right now, you see up here, this little independent square on the left hand side and and right along. It's about two hundred acres right now, right along this section here. And what they told me on the meeting is that we'll get, there's no legal access right now into their wildlife area, which is over here for hunting and stuff. People get in there, but there's no legal access in this. First part will put legal access into their area. And what they have is they have an R C O grant in the works to purchase that from Warehouser.
Just that one little chunk.
That one little chunk. What this map is a little bit misleading because that's their long term goal with Warehouser.
So the little chunk is the only thing on the table.
Right. And it doesn't the only effect, it really doesn't have any effect on us other than letting us know in case people ask and whatnot. There one asked from us, if we were willing would be a letter to our CEO of support that we're okay with them doing this type of thing. And so I said, well, I'd bring that up to the the board. I don't foresee that there should be a big issue with that, but yeah. I ask them, the questions I ask them, is this willing? Warehouser want to sell? You want to buy? And they go, yeah. You know, and
It depends on the price.
Yeah, I mean, it's all negotiable and it's a long term project, but this first one seems to make sense if if what they're telling me on the access issues is legitimate and I have no reason to believe it's not, then it gives people legal access into their other area for hunting and fishing and that type of thing.
That little block is the two hundred acres?
The little block here plus a little bit along this line here.
Ah, okay.
Equals two hundred acres. He didn't send me the map that he showed on the deal that put that out.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a problem sending a letter of support. I don't have a problem sending a letter of support.
Okay.
You want to do it?
We'll do that. Did you want to take a short break before?
Let's take a short break. I'm going to go across the street and tell people that we're about to start.
Yeah, good, good. We've been, we've been trying to get people here for sure. Because they asked us tons of questions where an expert can answer.
How are you doing?
I don't know how long ago it's been, interesting conversation in a Tuesday meeting. I think, I think it started, we were talking about Eric Creek Fist I think it started, we were talking about Eric Creek fish fish passage, I think is what the. Topic was and there was a lot of conversation that came up on the. Fish recovery and all that. I mean, range from getting fish around dams to all kinds of things, so. Uh, we told them we would bring in the lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board and uh. Just kind of talk about some of those issues and so today with us, we have Mr. Sudar.
And and just a quickie, there there's still issues that are always hot, let's tear down all the dams and that'll solve the problem.
Yeah. So we invited Mr. Sudar in, he was gracious enough to come in and and uh. Chat on this subject a little bit.
Just by way of background, um, Calitz County has two representatives on the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board. One county commissioner and I've been serving in that role and then we've had a citizen at large. And for many years it was Randy Sweet, who is a port director down at uh, Calama. And and uh, he was spent many, many, many years on that board. Um, and and for the last five years or so, Hal Mankey, who's also known as Mr. Steelhead. As uh, has been representing us on that board. And he he retired and we nominated uh, Robert Sudar, who's been very active and involved in fish issues. So he's. And he's been giving reports for quite some time for different various groups, so ideally situated to share the information.
Is a bright green light on? Oh, now it's brighter.
There you go.
Um, I've been uh, involved in fisheries for over fifty years, primarily on the commercial side. I've been a Columbia River Advisor. Um, first for fishing wildlife or fisheries back when Fisheries Department existed in the eighties. And then uh, with Fish and Wildlife since the you two agencies were merged. And I I haven't been on the Fish Recovery Board for uh, for too long, I did get some information to talk about that too. And uh, they assured me that if you want to know more specifically about that, they would be glad to come and give a presentation, so. So hopefully what I put together today will be helpful and uh, and I'm always glad to answer questions. So I was going to use a a pointer a little bit, but since you're all looking on the screen, that won't help, so I'll uh. I'll uh, verbalize what I need to. So today. Working for me? Not yet. Don't give up on me. There we go. So today I'm gonna cover a couple topics. Um, a little bit about the Columbia River Basin in general and its salmon productivity and potential. Uh, how are Columbia Fisheries managed? Uh, cha- challenges of combining ESA listed salmon recovery with with existing fisheries. Uh, what impacts salmon recovery? And then something about the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board's efforts to uh, help with those things to creating healthy and harvestable runs, so. Hopefully that those topics will meet your your hopes for this. So this first picture is the entire Columbia River Basin. Uh, areas that drain into the Columbia from up in B C where Lake Columbia exists, uh, from as far. East is a little bit of Wyoming and Nevada and certainly Idaho and Montana and Washington and Oregon. And on the the drawing, the little uh, circles show dams, pr- primary dams that are on it. Uh, either uh, federal dams in red or some other local dams, but um, lots of changes. In the habitat on the Columbia over the last hundred years.
A quick question on that?
Yeah.
Should should we assume that the aquatic continuity? In the absence of the dams means that in before the dams, we we would have fish going all the way up to the northern most point.
Yes, yes, uh, yeah, up into way into Canada and uh, out in um, on the snake out. I I don't, I can't say exactly how far, but much more, so this next slide I think will help answer that. So this shows the that same basin, it shows areas in uh, brown that were never. Available to salmon in orange or areas that used to be available to salmon. Such as up into Canada, following um, above Grand Cooley up into Lake Columbia that were cut off. Uh, areas above the Hills Canyon Dams that are no longer available. And so what's producing salmon now are the areas in blue. That's how much of the original Columbia River Basin still has spawning habitat and anadromous fish runs. Does that help answer the question?
It does, although uh, the. Waiting factor primordially, would the uh, orange area have contributed as much or as more? As in the blue?
Um. I can't really answer that for sure, I I can say that the area into Canada was a was a big producer. And when they, if you've been in the area for a long time and you heard about June hogs that used to talk about really exceptionally large salmon. They used to head up into Canada into the Arrow Lakes region and that was a major contributor to to what was in the Columbia. And that it was all cut off, so um, I think also over into um, Kettle Falls and into those areas. Those were all cut off also by um, Grand Cooley and Chief Joseph Dam, so um, I don't know ratio wise. How they compare.
It was significant though.
Yeah, it was significant, right? Uh, there are uh, various runs in the river, we got spring Chinook. Uh, summer Chinook, now the summer Chinook is a kind of a small divot there in the center. Uh, that used to be much lon- larger when those Canadian uh, rivers and lakes were available. That that's diminished significantly, matter of fact, when the first commercial fisheries started, they basically just focused on spring and. And summer fish and were less interested in fall because of differences in quality.
So what we're seeing here is a. Is a ten year average?
Yeah, I think it says two thousand eight to two thousand seventeen, um, it's sometimes difficult, but but those trends are are. Similar regardless, if you go back a little further, probably into the. Eighties and nineties, there would be some similarities too, because a lot of the wild runs were um. Significantly diminished after the completion of the last dams in the seventies. Um, Sockeye uh, shows there that that run is actually recovered quite significantly. They are uh, primarily wild fish headed to the Okanagan and Wenatchee River Systems. Uh, there is an endangered run in that, it's the Redfish Lake that you hear about, I mean, that's about almost all you hear about are Redfish Lake Sockeye and how they're endangered, but. They're just a little tiny bit in that goes to Idaho in comparison to um, to the overall Sockeye Run. And this year that run is predicted to be uh, four hundred thousand and they already have over three hundred and thirty thousand over Bonneville and it's not even halfway point yet, so. It's a uh, overall, that's a pretty, pretty large significant, and it's come back. Due to some stream improvements and and water flow issues over the last twenty years.
I can't see your math there to read it or your your graph, but the summer run of Chinook work, uh, show me the.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, full Commissioner Weber, right there, yeah, yeah.
When is, when is the peak of that, that summer run about?
Um, well, at Bonneville, it's at Bonneville, it's um. It's right around now, actually, the halfway point is in a is in a couple days from now.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, i- i- if I could to help, can can you come up here and turn the mic on? I can hear you well, but this has been recorded and he's answering questions that people can't hear. Make sure the green, you know, the green button, the the green lights on.
Where does it, where do you turn it on that right here?
Right in the middle.
Oh, yeah. When uh, uh, when does the Indian uh, when, when can the Indians start fishing there at Bonneville? On that summer run?
Um, they started um. Last week, I think.
Did they? Okay.
Around the same time, I think they have a couple day, like the recreational fishery. Well, it it continued from spring into summer this year, but it uh, technically transitioned on the sixteenth of June. From spring to summer and I think the tribes have a couple day delay and then they start fishing, so so they're fishing now.
And and for how, for how much longer about?
Uh, it's it's a quota system, I'm not sure just what their quota is this year.
Okay.
But uh, it's on a quota system.
Okay.
So the um, the run below. Priest Rapids Dam, because that summer run is still destined for the Wenatchee, the Semilkamy and the Okanagan, those rivers and and in the upper Columbia. That run is. Um, split half between the treaty tribes and half between the um, sport and um, commercial fisheries. It also includes a fairly significant portion that's harvested in the ocean, so it all gets divvied up. In different quantities through quite a few different user groups, so, but the tribes get fifty percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
A few sentences ago, you mentioned three hundred and ninety thousand or four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
How is that the, that that's obviously an estimate?
So, yes, so that that's a prediction, they do count them at the dam, so the preseason prediction. Uh, a lot of it's based on migrant outflow numbers they collect at sampling. And then they look at ocean conditions and I I, they have a lot of models that. Uh, computer modeling is almost everything on fisheries management now, if you can't model it, you can't do it and.
Can you trust it?
Uh, well, it's better than anything else we have and and they're surprisingly good, they get a lot of criticism, but. But really, they do a pretty good job.
Big factor of the ocean is the temperature?
Um, it can be temperature, it can also be food availability. And uh, I have a chart towards the end that shows about twenty, thirty different factors they look at in ocean um, productivity. But certainly temperature is a factor and you'll see in that chart how the blob affected uh, ocean productivity, so.
I guess one other question on that summer run, what uh, what would be your average uh, size of your fish?
Um. Well nowadays, uh, typically eighteen pounds.
Okay.
Yeah, something in that range, I mean, they can range anywhere from from uh, ten or eleven to thirty or more, but. I would say average is around eighteen pounds.
Eighteen, twenty.
And it'll vary a little bit over the course of the six weeks that those fish are in the river.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so and then uh, also shows, it shows a bigger peak on fall Chinook. Because those are currently the largest individual run in the river, I can't say that's always been the case, but. But uh, these days that's the case. And then Coho, uh, pretty variable Coho runs, but they come in, they start in uh, August primarily and. They'll actually keep coming into the river until December.
Okay, I got a question here. I'm looking at your fall season there.
Okay.
Which basically starts fifteenth of August and. It shows the peak now is that graph, is that uh? Last year's or what what is that graph?
Well, no, so that's an average of uh, two thousand eight to two thousand seventeen, but it's not particularly different these days. Year to year, it can vary some a week or so, or maybe even ten days, but primarily the um. The overall Chinook run into the Columbia. Tends to peak in the first couple of weeks of September.
Okay, um. I got a problem with the whole thing is about where it peaks. It's always shut off. Uh. You know, some people can't get out every day, some people can and all that. Um. Uh. So why do they shut it off when the peak of the run is?
Well, um, the the season is determined at the North of Falcon program process, which. Is a multi-state and governmental um, series of meetings that take place in the spring. To look at what the next year is going to look like and each user group. Um, attends that and and certain leaders in the group decide when they want to fish. And the majority of the recreational leadership wants to fish in August. That's their decision, so you you only have so many um, fish available and o- only so many. Um, I haven't talked about impacts yet, but ESA impacts, which is how many of the listed runs you can affect during your fishery and. The recreational groups that are at these meetings. Want to fish as many days as possible and they feel that they can accomplish that best by. Gearing their fishery to August and very early September and um, and then seeing what's left available after that, so. Uh, I. And the one thing that's changed quite a bit is that the guide industry has grown tremendously. And so guides want trips and so they can develop more trips if they fish a longer season. So they look for where, how that fits and um, and that's just the reality of how the recreational fishery is determined.
Yeah, they're they're. They don't care, they, as long as they can fill their boat up with people, they don't care how many fish. Uh, all right, if the next question is, what are you doing about the seals and the cormorant?
So.
Maybe we could let him go proceed with you.
I I do have something about seals and cormorants at the end, so I will uh, I'll get to that.
Okay.
So. Okay, let's see what's next here. So th- this um, graphic shows where our fish go, the uh, these are, the color, it's color coded to different. Origins, but if you look where the red fish is and you follow that out, Columbia River or salmon, many of the runs are. Far migrating to the Bering Sea up towards Gulf of Alaska for sure, actually. And so they travel a long way, they spend a lot of time in Alaskan waters. And they are significant portions of fisheries all up and down the coast, not just what happens off our coast or in the Columbia. And so. Excuse me, you can see where um, you know, there there's a, the lower Columbia stocks is the pink line. And that would be more like Tully Chinook, which are typically what we have spawning in the lower river here, most of our lower river stocks are Tully stocks, not all of them. But uh, they're significant to Canadian fisheries and to our coastal fisheries and uh. The uh, upriver brights are are the, and the Snake River fish are the ones that migrate even further, so. The next slide will show how they contribute coast wide.
On this slide, there there is, there are no lines coming out of Alaska?
So the yellow one, the yellow line is Alaskan Chinook, so this is Chinook only. I should have probably said that and the yellow lines up at the top are. Are southeast Alaskan Chinook runs. Really, the Columbia is the is the world's largest producer of Chinook salmon, that that nobody produces more. Historically, more than the Columbia and even today, the Columbia is the biggest producer of, as a single entity of any of Chinook. In the world, it and it it supplies fisheries all up and down the coast. And uh, there are still some really healthy runs in the Columbia that are aren't publicized adequately, so um, but. Um, this next. Slide, so this shows who uh, how fish are harvested, that big dial at the top, that is. The southeast Alaska troll fishery and the green segment is Columbia River fish, so twenty-five. Twenty to twenty-five percent of what they catch there are our Columbia River salmon. And the red section is uh, Washington, Oregon coastal stocks, so thirty-five percent of what they're catching in that fishery is. Uh, Washington fish, the contribution of actual Alaska Chinook is that little gray seg- seg- segment up at the top. Of that pie chart, that's how much are actually Alaskan fish, the rest are either B C or Oregon or Washington fish.
Should we be charging them a per fish fee?
Well, their answer is that they're feeding our fish, so they get to, but but that's where a lot of the of the. Conversation these days is is taking place in in terms of recognizing how much is actually harvested elsewhere, and you can see the green section. It's important in north B C, northern B C, it's very important on the west coast of the Vancouver Island, that's those lower river Tully stocks and of course, it's. Important off the coast, where once again, a lot of what our coastal trollers, sport and commercial are catching are uh, Tully stocks rather than upriver brights, so.
So these are undocumented fish, so we don't know, how do we know that it's an Alaskan grown fish versus a Columbia grown or a Columbia hatched fish?
That comes out of a market up there, you mean, like that or?
Like I'm a fisherman, I picked up a fish. What markings does it have that I know it came out of the Columbia versus out of Alaska somewhere? What markings does it have that I know it came out of the Columbia versus out of Alaska somewhere?
Probably none that you could determine. If you had the head, uh, fisheries agent could scan it for a pit tag, little um. They insert little wires in the nose. Uh, yes, yes.
We were, we were only talking hatchery?
No, this is, this is all runs together. Yeah, yeah. So other than that, um. They, they can do genetic sampling, but uh, I don't know how much of that they do in, in Alaska. You can determine it. More completely than that, if you want to do the science.
I was just trying to understand how we even get the data in the pie chart.
Yeah, so they, they do enough to do that. They, but what percentage of the run they're analyzing, I can't tell you that. So. But th- 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 these divisions are pretty well documented that this is what's happening. Um, in those fisheries.
Have to be based mostly on a sampling of fish. Taking the, the hatchery fish and saying which ones came from where. And then they extrapolate to the whole field.
Uh, well, I know they can do some uh, other more specific DNA sampling on some of these runs to make some determining. I, I can't give you the. A solid answer. So certainly the hatchery fish are the easiest to determine. So things to know about Northwest Salmon. Salmon are designated as a food fish in Washington law. They're not a game fish like trout or steelhead. They were originally managed by the Department of Fisheries, which um, was eventually combined with fish and wildlife. And so now the fisheries is gone and both food fish and game fish. Are managed by the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And ever since then, uh, there's been a decline in commercial fisheries and a transfer of harvests from the commercial sector to the recreational sector. That's just been a fact since uh, throughout the last thirty years. It's been uh, at sometimes a slow pace and sometimes rapid. Who pays for salmon? Uh, all hatchery production on the Columbia and most throughout Washington is paid for by Federal Mitchell Act mitigation money. That was for. The in, uh, established in the nineteen thirties when the dams first went in. And also by local utilities. So anybody who pays taxes or pays power bills is contributing to hatchery production. It doesn't come from licenses. It comes from those kind of funding sources. About ten percent of the public buys a recreational fishing license. And so about two to three percent of that public fishes for salmon. The rest of the population depends on uh, access to commercial harvesters if they want fish, or unless they have a family member who recreationally fishes. Most economic studies show that the economy benefits the most when there are viable commercial and recreational fisheries. Uh, this shows the Columbia from uh, the mouth to McNary Dam. And the first half there is zones one to five. That's where uh, non-tribal commercial fisheries can take place. And zone six is the area for the primary tribal fisheries. And then recreational fisheries occur along that whole length on into the snake, up into uh, northern. Um, northern Washington and, and all those side tributaries. So there, there's a lot of different groups that have. Fisheries in different parts of the, of the river. That's why sometimes when you hear somebody say, well, so, one group got so much in one location. Compared to what somebody else got. The, the fishing zones are not consistent, so. It's helpful if you can really drill down into which areas they're talking about, rather than just cherry picking the ones you want to, to tell your story. Now, we also on the commercial fishery in the last forty years or so, they've developed some select areas that you might hear about where. Uh, smolts are released in areas where they didn't have native populations. And those are primarily. Uh, for commercial harvest. There's one at Young's Bay as you cross the bridge from um, Astoria to Warrenton. On the left there, that's Young's Bay. Um, Tongue Point, Blind Slough, and on the Washington side, Deep River, uh, are not very productive. Site, but commercial fishermen and recreational fishermen can fish in these areas. And about thirty percent of what's produced in those areas is actually caught outside of the area in ocean and buoy ten fisheries. So they contribute, they're primarily set up for commercial fisheries, but they contribute to both in fairly large numbers.
Is, is it obvious in a case where you can say like deep. River is not. Not a productive champion. Can you see that from your desk, just sort of knowing the environment there? Is it temperature, food, predation?
Um, I, I'm not sure why it doesn't produce. It just doesn't. You know, I mean, it's, we. From my perspective, we should not be spending money on that site. It doesn't produce enough for anybody. And. It, it's, um, but it's the only select area we have in Washington. And so I think there's an interest in keeping it established. It's, it's. It's difficult to establish these sites, because you have to have something where there isn't a native run, so that you're not competing. Because they don't fish, uh, they, they, you know, you fish non selectively basically, so you can keep everything that you catch. And so you need a pretty clean location. And it has to also be a, uh, an area that. That um, is productive, for whatever reason, for the stream environment. And Deep River has just not shown itself to be that kind of a location. But they also release a lot more smolts on the Oregon side. A, a lot more. I mean, you're talking uh, millions of smolts on some of these locations, of, of fall Chinook, spring Chinook and Coho. So there's a lot of fish released there.
Bob, on the, on the Deep River um, basin. Two things that I, I recall as being challenges there. The, the lowers, the lower reaches have quite extensive farming with, with levees and dykes. And so that. That compresses the ability for the fish to, to, uh, to, to swim in and grow. And then farther up into the hills, uh, Deep River, I think, was one of the common sites for the splash dams. That uh, collected the logs in a reservoir behind a dam, and then they'd release everything to get the logs all the way down. Tearing everything down to the bedrock. So if you have a stretch with a lot of bedrock. Especially in August, that's lethal for, for fish. Uh, they can't sustain those high pressures. I, I, I think those are the two major challenges for, for Deep River. Cause I know that the board in the past has, has done some developing. And uh. Yeah, so that's typically some of the problems that we have even in Callas County Rivers, the, the heritage of the.
Right, I mean, um, splash dams were on the Cowie Man and uh. I happen to live near Germany Creek and the flow gets really low in the spring or in the, um, in the fall. And as fish start to move up, move up, it can be a while before we get enough rain to actually lift it up high enough to get them more than a. Quarter mile up the, up the creek, you know, so it, um, stream spawning habitat within the stream and also. Stream flow are, are real problems in a lot of our smaller streams.
Specifically with that example in mind, is that something that. Uh, we have changed, we meaning humans have changed in the past fifty years? Or, or was that always the case, that that never was going to be easy for the fish?
Um, I, I can't tell you that for sure. I know that in my own experience, I remember as a kid getting. Pretty significant rainfall in August. Before I started fishing, I remember I mowed a lot of lawns. And I often got rained out in August. And, and as a commercial fisherman, I remember that when the. Uh, pink salmon started to run in mid-August, we'd often get a change in weather. And this was in the Puget Sound, not on the Columbia. And that would bring fish in. And so those are just my personal experiences. Um.
I, I've been here since about two thousand and five, and I claim I've never had any two years. That were like any other two year, like any year like any other year.
Yeah, it, it, you know, it, it's, it, uh, it varies, but right around that time, we did have a really. Uh, significant rainfall in August. It was in the early two thousands. And the river came up, Germany Creek, uh, once again, a lot of Chinook made it up. I don't know, I don't know why there were so many available that year. But, and the next year, they had several million smolt go out out of Germany Creek. From that spawning. So, you know, that water habitat is certainly critical for the.
Those were not hatchery then, those were.
Those were, those were wild spawned, yeah, yeah.
I could make a little P S to that as far as your age, my age, and remembering when. The timber harvest, the timber harvest where we had a lot of timber on the hills that held back the rain, or held back the water. And the streams were always flowing well. Cowie Man River, hell, I was raised on basically the Cowie Man River. Uwan Mill Crick or Abernathy, I don't remember which. Germany Crick. But there used to be a lot of water coming down the rivers, cricks. And now there isn't any because there's no timber to hold back the water.
Yeah, well, when I was, was young, uh, I remember hunting up above in the headwaters of uh, Germany Creek. And there, you know, there were, it was all replanted and there were, there were stands. And since those have been logged off and. And I would say that we've seen that kind of an impact in heavier runoff. But that's a winter event. Uh, in comparison to how much is retained in the summer. I, I'm, I'm not a good judge of that.
But I mean, the Cowie Man River anymore is just a, I mean, it's just a trickle, you might say, you know. But, but when I was a kid, why, up, clear up the Cowie Man Lake, there was timber up there. All, all up in the Cowie Man Valley. And basically the same way out there in Germany Crick. I, you know, I used to hunt up there, Abernathy lookout, look at it now. Stripped off, again, again.
Again, right.
That's just a P S as far as the amount of water coming down the cricks for fish.
It's not just me that's seen that, so. Okay, what's next here? Uh, fishery economics. What's that?
Yeah, before we move on, could you go back to that real quick? Is there, is there biologically a difference between a hatchery fish and a native?
I, I, well, I would say no, in terms of, of genetics or anything. There are, there are claims that they are, are not as. Uh, effective at survival because they are used to being fed in the hatchery. But genetically, I don't think there's any difference. I mean, I, as I buy them and as I clean them, I don't see any difference between the two.
So, so you, you mentioned the term that you don't want, they, or that whoever it is that set this program up does not want the hatchery fish competing with the natives. Which is why we have select areas. So what, what does that mean exactly?
Um, I, I don't remember that I said that, but what, what, what I. Wh- wh- the select areas were supposed to be additional commercial harvest areas, in addition to the main stem.
But they have to be somewhere where there is no native run.
Oh, yes, yes, that's true.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, that's what you were talking about, that they couldn't compete. So my question is, is if, if those select areas. Actually increase the harvest for the commercial fisheries and the, the recreational fisheries, why isn't that program implemented? Well, I guess, who, who, what's the, what's the, the adverse effect of having those programs in rivers where there are native runs?
Well, these were the primary areas that have been studied. I mean, they've studied areas all the way from the mouth to. Uh, to the cowlets at least, and maybe further looking for other sites. And they just haven't found any that were the right combination of water quality. Accessibility, consistent stream flow, and no impact on native runs, even if they aren't large native runs of native runs. It, like, they wanted to put one in, in Coal Creek Slough, if you head out towards Stella. And um, there were some water quality issues, and there are some native runs that go into Coal Creek. And, and it, and it also doesn't provide enough space really for a commercial fishery. It, uh, and so. They really don't have any other areas. They've spent a lot of money looking for other sites like that and have not found any.
But it is one of the premises that they're looking for, that there is no native run in that river. Cause my, my question is, is I. You know, as I fish the rivers, like for example, I look at the rivers that we fish on that have hatcheries on them. It, it would seem to make sense that if, if one river can hold native fish, take example, the Klammer River. It's got summer and winter run, steelheads running, runs all year long. And then it's got the fall and the, the, the spring Chinook and then, and the summer run Chinook. Um, why can't we, though they, they have native run fish, which in my personal opinion, and correct me if I'm wrong, once you've introduced a hatchery. Into a river, that native is uh, just a term that government likes to use because they can't. Fish don't selectively breed with each other. Oh, you're, you're not a native, I'm not going to breed with you in the wild. So why don't we implement this type of a program on rivers where we do have native runs to, to boost that run? Into the commercial fishery and into the recreational fisheries.
Well, they are trying to use native stock and hatcheries now. That wasn't, I mean, originally they were picking favorite stocks for different. Behavioral aspects and using those in a lot of different hatcheries. And now they are, they don't do that so much. They try to. Look for a native stock in the river to raise in the hatchery. And in that case, they have less change. I mean, the genetics of each stream are different, you know, so um, so a fish from the cowlets may not. Uh, that, that spawns with a, a fish off the Lewis may not produce. As good a candidate for either stream, you know, so there, it's, obviously they've, they've genetically developed in those streams. Based on the habitat that's there. And that will be the best fit for that stream. That wasn't what they did originally in putting hatcheries in, but that's what they're doing now. And so that's making a difference. As far as, as enhancing, uh, like putting a hatchery on the Klammer, is that what you're suggesting?
Or, or increasing the output of the hatchery. Like, for example, I believe the Elocum, and there's talk that they were going to close that hatchery down because they want to. Increase the native run of salmon, um, which to me, and like I said, I'm, I'm open to, to criticism and ridicule and correction. I don't understand the thought process that we're talking about with the fish, because once you introduce a hatchery. That, that native run of fish is all, I mean, like I said, fish don't selectively breed, so the two, you could have two spawning fish. That I, I catch the spawn off of that fish, but because the adipose fin isn't clipped, all of a sudden that's considered a native? Well. No, it's the spawn of a hatchery fish. So the, the determination, the, the, the program or system that they use to determine that is what I'm wondering if you can. Give some insight into, because if this program works on the Oregon side, and you're, and like you said, it's increasing the fishery. I don't understand why we're not implementing that on other rivers.
Uh, well, because. Because most of our, our rivers have native runs and these sites did not have that. You know, so, so uh, there wasn't, apparently, I'm, I'm not a, a Young's Bay guy, but. But apparently Young's Bay did not have a significant native run of salmon in it. So introducing new stock, which is in the case of the spring Chinook. It's all Willamette fish. So they're bringing Willamette stock fish down to Young's Bay, raising them in a pen and then releasing them. Um, those fish are, uh, are not competing with anything in the wild. Whereas if you did that in, in another stream. That has a run, then um. Then you're, where are you going to get the, the, the smolts from? Are they going to be the same as what's in there anyway? And it's just not the policy. The, the policy is to, in general, have thirty percent of the. Spawners be um, hatchery fish. You might hear PHOS is a term they use quite a bit, P H O S, and it's. Percent hatchery on spawning ground. And that is their target, that if it's a stream that has wild and hatchery fish. Uh, like the Wenatchee, you could, you know, if it just out of, comes to mind. They don't want more than thirty percent of the spawners to be hatchery fish, of the natural spawners. The ones that don't go to the hatchery that end up spawning, like you said, with wild fish. So, um, beyond that. I can't tell you why, all, what all the decisions are. But also the National Marine Fisheries Service has limits as to how many. Um, in the ESA range over how many fish you're producing that are going to impact native runs throughout the, the region. They had a, uh, twelve years ago, they talked about adding like seven million um, Coho smolts to. Young's Bay, but the National Marine Fisheries Service says, no, you can't do that, because you're going to overwhelm the overall percentage of. Um, of Coho, including wild fish in the area, because Coho tend to, tend to wander. And so they limited how much they could do, so. Um, so there, there's a, there, there's a lot of limitations on what they can do. And, and there's usually some science behind it. You just gotta dig and ask a few questions to get to that, so. Thank you. Okay, um, economic value of the two fisheries is usually based on different references. Uh, for the sport fishing, it's usually, how much is a trip worth? How much is an individual willing to spend to go on a trip? Obviously, a guided trip is more expensive than somebody who drives down and sits on the beach and fishes off the shore. But there are different numbers depending on who does the calculation.
Is the basic uh, dollars per pound of fish or something like that?
No, it's just dollars per, per trip. Like, how much are you going to spend? Uh, are you going to buy a meal? Are you going to have?
Got it.
You know, gas, whatever goes into that.
All the tourist cost.
Yeah, yeah. The, the commercial side is a little different. Each fisherman is a business and, and they reference the ex vessel price. So. So the ex vessel price is what the buyer pays. So I'm, I'm mostly a buyer these days. For every fisherman that I buy from. Uh, I fill out a page like this, where it, it's got um, my license information, the fisherman's license information, the zone. um, my license information, the fisherman's license information, the zone where it was caught in the river and those there were like five zones in the lower river. It asks which one of those we're fishing in. It asks, uh, what species, how many pounds, what I paid for them. And then I call this information in within twenty-four hours and I have to get it to the state within seven days. So every buyer has to fill this out for each fisherman that he buys from. And a fisherman can't sell his catch to anybody but a licensed buyer unless he's himself a licensed buyer.
To understand the chain. So, uh, you're a, you're a, you're a broker, a wholesale broker in this case?
Right nowadays. Yeah, I started as a fisherman, but I'm.
So when I go to Costco and I buy, uh, the farm salmon, that's different.
Yep.
But when I buy the real stuff, it has to have gone through someone who has that notebook.
Something like that. Yeah, I don't know what they do in Alaska. Like if you're at, if you're at Costco now and you're buying Copper River sock, I I don't know what they require and, but, but they are going to a buyer and they're getting, um, collected there and they have some sort of documentation. So.
I guess I'm trying to ask in a roundabout way. That data you produced, the, is that, does that count, account for maybe ninety-five percent of the of the actual fish consumption from a commercial standpoint?
Oh, I would say at least that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, um, it's really hard to sell salmon individually. You don't want to have twenty fish on hand that you have to find a market for, you know, even ten fish can be difficult. I, I rarely have fish that I haven't, to some extent, pre-sold because it just, it's a perishable commodity. And you want to be able to send it to market, you know, and, and so, um, so this is the ex vessel price. And then on top of that, in our industry, um, it goes through the market, it goes, I mean, I, I get something for it when I take it to Seattle. And then it gets processed, you know, through a grocery store to a customer. It goes to a restaurant where it gets cut up into portions, you know. So, so the ex vessel price to me isn't really a very good indication of what the fishery develop, determines in value because it's just the first step. Whereas the sport fishing trip is the final step in cost. And it's basically using, um, uh discretionary money because you could spend it on something else, but fishermen like to fish. And so they're willing to spend that earning on something else. So they, it's, to me, it's not really fair to compare the two because the, the economics are different between the two. So.
Interesting, isn't it?
Oh, that's what I finished up there with. It's difficult to compare the two. Our fisheries managed. Uh, Oregon and Washington work together through the Columbia River Compact that was established in nineteen eighteen. And in general, they, uh, are, they work in alignment. The last few years, there have been a few misalignments on occasion. But, uh, in general, it's still a working, uh, program. Uh, USV Oregon Treaty, that establishes the, uh, state and tribal joint management. It's the, was the, uh, baloney decision on the Columbia. It's similar to the Bolt decision in Puget Sound, if you're more familiar with that. I think that gets more publicity. But they both basically talk about fifty-fifty sharing and and which tribes are eligible and that, and how it splits between, um, non-tribal and tribal harvesters. Run estimates are developed each year. Um, so like, they, they used to use jack counts quite a bit. And that's an, an immature male that comes back early. And it used to be a pretty dependable number for predicting how many adults would come back the next year. That's not, doesn't seem to be as consistently useful as it used to be. I'm not sure why. They also do look at smolt migration and things like that. There were smolt counters out in the river here, uh, in the last month. Somebody might have seen them out there. They do a trawl net and, and collect smolts and make some estimates. And they also on a lot of these streams. You'll see these turning drums, which are, are, are smolt counters that are if you drive out Germany Creek, just a little ways up, you'll see one, they're, they got them on, um, quite a few streams. So they're used to, um, collect smolts. Somebody comes on, checks them out, does sampling every day. Counts them, lets them out and they can get some ideas. I don't, they don't collect everything, but it gives them an idea what's been in the river. In the smaller streams. Uh, both wild and hatchery, uh, returns are, uh, estimates are needed to determine how harvestable levels. Because we, not all wild runs are, are, um, are listed in the state. We don't, the summer run is not listed. The upriver brights that go to Hanford, those are not an ESA, ESA listed stock. So you need to get a look at hatchery returns and wild returns overall to determine how much fishing can happen to avoid impacting those ESA listed fish.
When you say ESA listed, I'm assuming that's endangered species.
Yes, yeah.
How, it seems strange to me to apply that when we're talking about sports fishing and commercial fishing.
So, um, so they, they determine impacts through a scientific process that National Marine Fisheries Service did. And it looks at what the, how, what size the run is and how many fish they think would be lost through other activities, whether it's predation, whether it's passage at the dams, whether it's, um, I don't, I don't have all of them. And they figure that there's a percentage of those fish that can be lost through handling and harvest, whether it's kept in harvest or whether it's, um, released, but it dies anyway. And that they can have a certain number of those fish in each run in, in a given year that can be, uh, lost and not impair recovery of the run. So it, I, I can't give you the science behind it. Uh, it's uh, it's been in, established for about twenty-five years that it's a viable thing to do. Not everybody agrees.
I miss more, I appreciate that a lot. Uh, mostly just asking from a political standpoint, when you declare something as endangered, all of a sudden everybody, oh, we can't eat it, we can't touch it, can't do anything. It sounds like ESA is used here as a management tool.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because partially hatchery fish are raised to be harvested. You know, I mean, that, you don't need all, a lot of fish back to the hatchery to generate another run. If you, if you said you can't im, uh, impact any ESA listed salmon and you couldn't have any fisheries, then you essentially would not be able to have any hatchery fisheries, fishery production either. Because they weren't getting harvested and they would, and so you need to find a way to access those. Uh, and the ESA impact system works. And it also then works for, for healthy runs that are, are not listed. Contact the National Marine Fisheries Service for, for the science.
Used to have an office not very far from them. In San Diego.
Okay. And impacts are divided between tribal sport and commercial fisheries. They're also on a sliding scale depending on the return. Like this, they had talked about two percent for sport and commercial fisheries in the lower Columbia in the spring. It was only, I think, one point seven percent this year because the run was, was below a certain level. So it can also get up as high as, I think, two and a half or two point six percent, depending on how big that return is. So, but, but basically it gets divided three ways. And they're developed to avoid listed stocks and focus on healthy runs. Uh, so selective harvest, there's a couple of ways you can do that if you're trying to minimize how many of those impacts you're using. In our fishery, uh, in the fall, we're using avoidance techniques. We're fishing, um, in up in zones four and five, which is from, uh, basically woodland to the, um, to Bonneville. And we're avoiding the lower river Tully stocks, which almost all spawn, not quite, but almost all of them spawn below that area. So we don't handle as many of those. And we're focusing more on hatchery fish bound for above Bonneville and the, um, upriver brights that spawned at Hanford. We do, um, catch some of the Snake River listed fish and uh, but once again, that is, um, our harvest of upriver brights is limited by how many of the Snake River wild fish can be harvested. So there's a calculation involved in that. And, uh, that, that's the same basic thing that this recreational fishery is doing. It's just that they're fishing further down because they have more impacts than we do. So they can afford to fish where the Tullys are. Uh, also timing, when are we going to fish? We avoid those first two weeks of September because that's when the fish we don't want to catch are most abundant. And we, uh, vary the gear. You can have nets of different size openings. We use a nine inch net in August because the, uh, steelhead are smaller and they can pass through that net without getting caught. And, and they're also those, the bigger fish, the B steelhead tend to come through in that early September to mid-September timeframe when we aren't fishing. And so uh, we're using those three things to avoid catching the wrong fish.
How, how many sea lions you catch?
Well, in the fall, sea lions aren't as big of a problem really. They tend to leave the river for, um, for, for mating season and the like. So they're a real problem in the spring, but they tend to leave the river. They start coming back in and it, you know, they can be a bit of a problem, but I don't hear much complaint about that from the fishermen in the fall season. And then the other thing is mark selective fishing where you're, you're focusing on hatchery fish. The, those are the ones in Washington that have the clipped adipose fin back by the tail where you, uh, release those and just, uh, you keep those, just release the wild fish. And, uh, i- it's effective when the r- ratio of hatchery to wild fish is high, like in the spring, when eighty to eighty-five percent of the Chinook are hatchery fish. Then that kind of a fishery works pretty well. In the fall, if the ratio is thirty to forty percent hatchery fish and sixty to seventy percent wild fish, then it's not as effective because you have to sort through a lot of fish to get to it. So there are times when each is a functional way to harvest.
What if salmon? Problem with honesty on the commercial fishery?
Is there a problem with honesty?
Yeah, like I just happened to accidentally flip this fin.
I would say that the, uh, commercial fishermen over the last twenty-five to thirty years are a much different group than the commercial fishermen that may have been in business in the early part of the development of the area. And I don't see any problem with, uh, people doing something illegal. And maybe they just don't show me, but it, but once again, it goes back to what I was saying about trying to move fish. If you are trying to sell fish that are a high value perishable item, you need to have a place to market them. You can't be sitting on the sidewalk. Now, years ago, twenty-five years ago, prices were terrible. And you did see fishermen marketing along the road because the prices were so bad. And, but that wasn't necessarily an illegal fishery. It was just a different way to market. And then what, but, but when prices are good, uh, it just, it doesn't behoove a fisherman to do that. And Ellen also on my forum, if they want to take a fish or two home, they're allowed a recreational catch each day. And I market on my forum so that it's documented also. So I don't, I can't speak for the recreational side. You have to ask somebody else about that.
I'll ask these guys over there.
So I remember reading in, in the news over the last eighteen months or so that, uh, Governor Enslie has been very concerned about providing food stock for the orcas. And Columbia River is a major source of that food stock. And the only way you can generate more fish is through hatchery runs. So does that thirty percent still, is that still in use? Or they, they made adjustments to try to get more food, feedstock out?
No, I would say that still is a, is a, a good number. That's part of what the lawsuits are about, is about, uh, whether or not they really can be increasing those numbers. Cause it impacts wild fish. But if you, if you look at more recent studies, particularly a lot of work the tribes have done, the, um, the effect of hatchery fish on wild fish is not nearly as pronounced as what you used to hear in, uh, twenty years ago in the research. They're not convinced that it makes that big of a difference. And, um, not that they're the same, but still that it's not as nearly as detrimental as it was thought to be at one time. So my last little bit here, I'm going to go through a few, uh, a few productivity issues, uh, adequate spawners, stream flow, uh, we talked about that already. Downriver passage at the dams, ocean health, ocean survival. And habitat, that's where the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board comes in. So this shows the major runs in the Columbia. And, uh, you can see a couple down there, like one, two, three, four down, upper Columbia, summer, fall, not warranted. They are not listed stocks because they are meeting their, for the summer fish, even though they are, it's a smaller run than it used to be. They are meeting their spawning goals every year at Priest Rapids Dam. And so they're getting enough fish back and, uh, uh, fall fish are the excuse me, um, uh, the upriver brights that we talked about in the Hanford reach where there were supposed to be another dam at that area. The Ben Franklin Dam, but it was never built because they didn't want another construction project next to Hanford at that time. So that dam was never built and it left the best spawning ground on the whole west coast for spring Chinook. And that run, the, the goal for spawners is sixty thousand. I'm not sure we've had under two hundred thousand get back there in quite a while. And ten years ago, they had some returns that were twice that, you know, it's, it's a super productive stretch of river. And it shows what, um, you know, how important the Columbia, uh, can be. And I, I think another thing it points out is that for Chinook, you don't necessarily need a tributary. A lot of them are main stem spawners. And we lost some of that, especially above, um, John Day and some of the other dams. And the snake too, the lower snake. Those four dams block, um, what was originally good spawning grounds for fall Chinook. So uh, there, there's a lot of, uh, of those kind of factors that are multiplied.
On the previous slide, you, the, the list of, uh, uh, salmon productivity, I, I, I don't directly see a food stock, uh, entry there and, or a disease entry.
Okay, give me two more slides. Uh, so, so this slide shows the eight dams that a Snake River fish will have to pass to get out to the mouth. And they've done a lot to improve passage of, of, uh, fish at each of those dams. They have bypasses. They have a variety of ways they do it. And the worst one is Bonneville at just about ninety-six percent there on the left and, and, uh, lower Monumental, it says ninety-eight point seven. But so they're all, they all look pretty good. But if you add them all together as the smolts are moving down, you lose about twenty-five percent of your smolts by the time you get to Bonneville. So you've already taken a pretty good chunk of your smolt production out. Even though dam passage is good. So, you know, this is, uh, spill has certainly helped. Uh, it, it's helped also on other runs besides spring Chinook. But, but, uh, passage at the dams is a problem.
Just, just to be clear then, you'd take point nine five times point nine five times point nine five.
I started with one and I multiplied by point nine seven five and I took that number and I multiplied it by point nine eight two and worked, worked my way down, right? I didn't just add them up and then, and then do it that way.
Understand, I, I, or I'd say, I'm glad that's the answer.
So this is the, uh, it, it, it looks really busy, I know. Uh, this is a stoplight chart that they do for ocean productivity every year. Um, these are from, uh, ninety-eight to two thousand twenty-three. Green, and on the left are all of the things they look at. Their temperatures, their copepod production, their smolt, uh, numbers they find in trawls and there are just a lot of different data points they use. Uh, green is good for a given year, red is poor and yellow is pretty good. So in the middle there, you can see there isn't much red. And that was when we had some really excellent returns in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. That strong ocean really benefited the production. Then you can see in fifteen, when the blob came in and it was bad for several years there, lots of red. That led to significantly reduced runs that we saw in eighteen, nineteen and twenty. And now we're seeing a trend to better conditions. And we have seen that in terms of what's come back to the river. So uh, so there is some, uh, I think, proof that that's pretty, pretty good thing. And that, another tool to look at to estimate how the, and how, and how important the ocean is. So so that has both food and, um, environmental factors on it.
Yeah.
You look at a chart like this and you have to count back how many years when they were
Yeah, right.
After they hatch, right? Cause it's a six to, six to seven year cycle, uh, five to.
So every, uh, each salmon is a little bit different in that regard. For Chinook, there are some that go out, uh, like Tullys, they go out. The spring after spawning, others spend a year in a stream before they go out, like spring Chinook. So, uh, those, and Coho. So uh those and Coho, uh so so Chinook are typically a four-year, five or six-year fish. Uh, most of them are four-year fish, but they get the bigger ones are probably out there a little longer. Coho are a three-year fish. They typically spend a year in a stream and then they go out, though they have found that some Coho. Go just as far as the estuary and then they go out, so uh that's maybe a little bit newer understanding and so. So anything that spends a year in a stream needs. Better habitat in the stream, better water levels in order to make it through that year. They'll go out as a bigger fish, so they might have. Uh, better prospects of live of of coping once they get out of the stream, but they gotta have that habitat to get to that. And I think that I saw in your first letter to me about talking today, discussion of woody debris and the importance. Of that in streams and 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 that's one of the things they've found is that woody debris is really important. It's important to have. Logs in streams, not next to streams, but in streams. It creates pools that can stay cooler. It creates uh more area for fish to uh to feed. And so all of that contributes to uh supporting those and and one of the reasons I think the Coho are so variable in returns is because. Of that uh need for that. Good year of uh s- stream conditions. Uh, sockeye are typically four-year fish. Uh, chum salmon are four-year fish. Um, and they're also, we don't have very many pink salmon in the Columbia. I don't know if we ever did, but they're a two-year fish. And odd years tend to be the, in Puget Sound, they only come back on odd years. But in Alaska, odd years are much more productive than even years, for whatever reason, so.
What's the meaning of the numbers inside the boxes?
So the numbers across the middle there that are lighter, those numbers are the uh or the numbers in each box.
The numbers in each box.
Uh, I think that's a rating, the lower the number, the better the condition. And then that number through the middle is kind of the average of of each of the streams, so or each of the years. So you can see that during those good years, there was like eight point eight, seven point four, nine point nine, those were good years. And twenty-one point five, nineteen point nine, those were poor condition years, so.
Two thousand and eight looks outstanding.
Two thousand eight was a was a really good year. Yeah, and so I'm trying to think back of uh what we did in. Two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten uh. Fishing was pretty good in those years, you know, in general, so. It it's just another tool, but it but it does give you some answers that we didn't used to have twenty years ago.
Yeah, some, I I believe this is true, the greater wind circulation over the Pacific causes. Can bring up w- w- welling, which is the food that the copepods need and the other plankton and. Uh, so the air circulation really does. Does ultimately impact this.
Yeah, upwelling is critical for the ocean food chain, absolutely.
Yeah.
For salmon and for other things too, it's it's uh essential. And when they don't have good upwelling, you see it in in poor marine survival.
Is is there much of a correlation between the uh? The hatch or the catch and um El El Nino, the weather patterns that change?
Yeah, in general, these conditions decline with an El Nino. And they are better in an El Nino. And so uh we had pretty strong El Ninos in that two fifteen, two sixteen range. And we just had a short one this time, so we'll see if it had much effect. In in general, what I've noticed is that Chinook. Excuse me, Chinook runs tend to be much more resilient than than like Coho runs. And so Chinook seem to be able to. Weather the storm a little bit, even though they're out in the in the ocean longer, they just seem to be a um less impacted. Uh, by some of the weather conditions and the ocean condition. They're still impacted, there's no doubt about that, but but not to that extreme. So the lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board, once again, I'm I'm new to this to some extent, and so. Uh, I did talk to them about some of this and they would be glad to come and give a talk to you just about what they do, if that is uh fits your your interest too. And there's various regions in the state that were set aside for. For this kind of work, the lower Columbia region is is actually, I think, one of the of the best run and most productive of those regional. Uh, boards in terms of what's been accomplished. It shows seventy-four ESA listed uh populations. So remember, those aren't. ESA listed stocks, they're populations, so. Quite a few populations of of um Coho go to make the ESA li- unit that. So that's why we have thirteen ESA listed salmon and steelhead stocks in the Columbia. We don't have seventy-four. But uh in our region, there are um lots of streams that have those uh listed stocks in them. Twenty-two hundred and eighty miles of fish-bearing streams, eighteen watersheds, so just lots of, it's a, it's a complicated um. But uh uh region, but also a lot of potential. There's lots of streams and rivers in in this part of the state. And spans six counties and five legislative districts. So this is uh looks at how the board has kind of broken down those areas. Each of those are essentially watersheds. You can see. Coweeman Watershed, the Lower Cowlets, the Toodle, uh Mill Abernathy, Germany, where I live, that's a, those are, those three are combined. And uh so there are can be uh projects in all of those sectors.
The the Mill Abernathy, Germany area.
Right.
Is a great area. I like the initials.
Oh. It's a uh. I- i- if you get a chance to drive along Abernathy, uh there are some nice pullouts on the lower river where you can look down. On the work that's been done there through the lower Columbia Board and other uh. Eight, working with other agencies and there's wonderful spawning habitat in there. And I've never been there at the right time of year to to see the fish in there, but I'm sure they're using it. It just, it's really, it's a. Wonderful to see how uh improvements have made that uh stream more compatible for salmon.
How far up the Calama do they go? Do the spawning runs go?
I can't tell you that because I don't know much about the Calama, so.
I know that's pretty heavy up to the hatchery and then after that I don't recall seeing much.
Uh, there's fifth, the board is fifteen members representing uh. Um, well, each county has a commissioner or a similar. Person on it and there's citizens like myself, there are business people from the energy companies. Um, a pretty broad swath of the public on the board. Five staff members. And uh they work with a variety of state and federal agencies. Two hundred and seventy-eight projects have been completed or are currently active in the planning stage. And the yearly grant funding is around three to five million of NOAA money and matching state money that goes into these various projects and they have um. Uh, requests for projects in the spring to to look to who might be um. Considered for some of that grant money. There have been some really interesting ones. I was um up on the Toodle last year. They've done a lot of work on that and. It's not just the work that they accomplish, it's also what they learn in trying to get the work done on what works and what doesn't work and. Uh, just a lot to be uh the benefit. So this is kind of similar to the stoplight chart, but this shows streams that have that actually have had improved viability. Over the course of the uh of when they began monitoring them to where they are now. And you can see that for fall Chinook, uh some of them, like the first one down and the fourth one down. V L means it was very low when they started, now it's at a medium ranking for uh fall Chinook on the Coweeman, a similar thing. And uh some of them are uh have downgraded when I see one went from medium to low, uh but. But still, um overall, we're seeing improvements, but you need to. Keep in mind that we didn't get to ESA listed species over just ten or twenty years worth of time. It took a, it took a. A lot of changes in the river and in um in and how we treated salmon. In order to get us to the point where people started saying they should be ESA listed. That the first listing was just thirty-five years ago and and we weren't really able to start making progress on some of these until maybe twenty years ago. So we're seeing improvements. We have some strong runs in the Columbia that don't even fit into this. We we're seeing progress in some areas where the Fish Recovery Board has been active. And uh unfortunately, the bet, the the successes don't get advertised very often. You always hear about the failures or the problems, but there are a lot of successes. It's just that uh you have to dig a little bit to get to that information. And now I think I have one slide left. Speaking of predators, so this is uh a chart that I found um not on predation loss due to um. Pinupeds. On spring Chinook. In the lower Columbia. Now now those numbers, uh those were big runs, so it means there were more fish in the river anyway. But you can see that that uh pretty high percentage of the run was taken. In some of these years, they're estimating on the side that one year forty-eight percent. Of the run was taken between the mouth and Bonneville by pinupeds. Now, back then, they were limited as to what they could do. Now they have much more flexibility on taking out some of these. Um, animals than they could before. It still isn't easy. You still have to identify the animal. You have to show that it's repeatedly. Taking salmon, but um. But they can do things because part of the complication was that they were protected under the Marine Mammal Act, which also has its own set of rules. You can't take marine mammals and stellar sea lions were listed, but I think that since then they've separated the um. The stellers down here from the stellers and the Aleutians, which are still listed, so. So through a lot of time and effort, they were able to get some permission. And you also need to remember that not everybody. Is sympathetic to fishermen compared to marine mammals. You know, some people like marine mammals and they. Can't see enough of them and so it isn't like the public is entirely in favor of of um. Limiting marine mammals. That's there's uh both sides of that, so.
And you've been down to San Diego and seen what happened to the cove and all that?
No, but I've seen San Francisco and the.
That's good enough. Yeah, well, for La Jolla, where the cove is, that used to be. Very picturesque and there was a a children's pool area, which really is a. Cove and you can't go near it now.
Yeah, it's a.
Because of sea lions.
Yeah, they've, well, the the California sea lion population is probably historically as big as it's ever been now, you know, they are. Fully recovered essentially from from what um uh harvest occurred a century ago to where they are today and. I I I think that that from my own perspective, I remember in the nineties, we had some unusual winter weather conditions, cold, low flow. And we didn't get any smelt and it seemed to me like that was when the um. Sea lions started moving up towards Bonneville and said, hey, we've got something else to eat up here and I don't, I just. I can't say I'm right, but I just remember that and since that time is when I really began to see um. Sea lion populations grow.
When you see the sea lion climbing of the ladders, that that's when we get upset?
Yeah. And also I I did fish in Puget Sound for a lot of years. It was pretty rare to see seals up in Puget Sound when I was fishing up there. Now they're everywhere and.
Seals, not sea lions?
Seals are a bigger problem in Puget Sound and they they.
Don't orcas eat seals?
Do it.
Don't orcas eat seals?
Well, they do, but you don't have a lot more seals than you have transient orcas that the the orcas in question don't eat seals, so. Um, anyway, the uh also on on the bird predation, I didn't find a good graph, but I did find that. Uh, Caspian terns typically take two to five million smolts, they thought the colony as a whole and the um. Double crested cormorants can take anywhere from uh four to twenty million smolts a year. And so they can have a pretty big number also that they're.
That's in the Columbia River basin?
Estuary, mostly down in the estuary and um. So it it's variable and also not all smolts travel in the same height in the water column. Some are higher and they are more susceptible to, I think, Tully Chinook and Steelhead. If I'm not mistaken, tend to travel higher and are more susceptible to bird predation than some other stocks which travel lower in the column, so. There's there's a lot of um aspects there to consider, so that was my last slide. Thought you'd never get to the end of it, did you?
No, I, you know, um, we we've done this every so often. This is one of my favorite things to do. I learned. I don't really have anything to say, I'm just sitting here kind of soaking in and and learning a lot and I. Your very first slide, when you talk about the whole Columbia Basin region, I didn't realize it spread that. That far, it's pretty, pretty incredible, so.
It is, I mean, it it the uh and once again, you know, it's really unfortunate that that uh. That story doesn't get conveyed very effectively and I've. Uh, I meet with people from fisheries quite a bit and and I tell them, you're just not getting your message out. And if you don't get your message out, then people don't think you have a message, you know, and and they need to consider that it's more than just. Commercial fishermen and recreational fishermen who have to be getting that message if they want to get support in the legislature, so.
Um, I can't speak for other uh the other regions in Washington State, but I know the lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board. Makes a huge goal of recognizing four. Four goals, four principles that we have to work together. You can't, you can't eliminate any of them. And and uh and those are, we we use the phrase, the four Hs. Which is harvest, we want enough fish so people can harvest. Um, we have to recognize the importance of improving habitat, so habitat's the second one. The third one is, we still have to have hatcheries. Because it's it's part of the mix, part of the harvest, part of these other goals. And then last. We can't go without hydroelectricity, so we have to recognize that they're a reality. Part of the constriction, I mean, we have to work with it. And and so those four Hs are are, I I think the. The right mixture that we have to continue to work at, it's always fluid and there's always consultation, but. We need to have a participation from all those interests and. And gradually, we're we're showing improvements.
I think that last stage for me is pretty. Much attractive, there's always this, we shouldn't, we should return to earth through his primordial condition. And of course, that means we should all die and or not even have ever been. Alive. Uh, when I looked at. The economics and I take all emotion out, I cannot believe that it's even a close contest. You can have the. Fish abundance. Or you can have the have the dams. And is there a contest there really? I mean. As a fisherman, would you advocate the removal of the dams on a snake city?
So I've been a little bit torn with that until the last few years. Uh, I'd like to see some. Some solid data as to what effect that would have, but I I know that, like I mentioned, the um. Main stem spawning that's been lost. On the snake by putting those dams in, you can certainly look at the trends on, I didn't bring that slide with me, but. If you look at the historical trends of Snake River fish. They used to be a a wild run and after those dams went in, they went down to almost nothing. And then as the hatcheries kicked in, they came back up again, but they certainly had a an impact on that and uh. And you can't, um, we've been growing wheat in the uh. In that region for a hundred and fifty years or more. We got it to market before we. Got barging, you can still bring the barges into Pasco and put them, uh, put the wheat on them there. You can bring them in by rail. You can, uh, the irrigators, uh, there are, so there is some irrigation, uh, irrigated agriculture, but you can pump that. And some some land was lost when they flooded it. It wasn't, there was some farmland that was flooded. Um, they have not been able to get uh ever turn Lewiston into a. I mean, you can get there from the ocean, but the amount of. Of uh economy that they predicted in terms of how much of an economic boost it would provide has never been met. And it's actually been declining for the last twenty years. So all of those things can be mitigated. And and the power, they they are run of the river um. Dams, they provide power in the spring and as the river drops, they they don't have a lot of storage in that regard, so. I think all those things can be mitigated. They certainly didn't do anything to. Mitigate for the lost fisheries when they put the dams in and there were, when I was in graduate school in Pullman. Uh, there was a economist named uh Whittlesley, Norm Whittlesley, anyway, uh. He did a talk where he felt that the um, the whole basin project really. Anyway, he did a talk where he felt that the the whole basin project, really, the irrigation throughout Washington. Was a questionable financial benefit compared to what it cost. The dams, that was, that was his take on it. But now, he says that the air he made was that he didn't consider the effect on fisheries of putting in all those dams. And so he has a little different, he's retired now, but he he has a little different take on that. So, you know, I I'm, it would be a risk in some regards, but I think the things that we could lose can be mitigated.
Interesting. So at least it sounds like you might advocate of the. Four dams, you can take two out and that's two times point nine five that you wouldn't have to multiply in.
I could take out a couple of those, yeah, but I don't know if they've ever studied which would be the most beneficial to take out. And they they wouldn't really take them out. They can, they have the earthen portion next to them. They would bypass them. And and basically get it closer to where the flow was originally, so.
But you're not conflicted about Grand Cooley Dam, so.
Well, I am, I'm conflicted, but I'm not, we're not going to take Grand Cooley out, you know, it's unfortunate. But there's a, there was a Northwest writer, his name escapes me right now, but he wrote a book called The Dam. And Murray Murray Morgan, I think it is. And he wrote in that book that they're going to lose a lot of habitat. But all those fish will redistribute in the lower river and it won't make any impact. Well, I'm sure that if he were still alive, he wouldn't feel that way anymore because salmon aren't that way. They are, they are very, they can colonize really well, but they don't just redistribute if they can't get to their home streams, so. It's too bad they didn't put fish passage in, but it's a, now, actually, the tribes are getting federal funding to put fish passage. Develop, I think they're going to truck them up above Grand Cooley. And try to get them back into those Canadian lakes.
You know, when I go to the soup, the super malls, they have steps, stairs or escalators. We need escalators in those dams.
It's a pretty tall dam.
You just jump a little bit and you get on the.
I I have a little bit more cynical viewpoint about the the dams on this Snake River. Because the calls seem to be from politicians centered in Puget Sound. Whose water is so atrocious, they can't raise, they're not making a difference on fish recovery. But they're they're spending the most money of the whole state programs on fish recovery. And so to make them feel better, they pick on a region in the farthest away you can get from Puget Sound.
I mean, our population is one of our biggest problems in this whole conversation. Because people continue to move into the area and they continue to develop in areas that impact salmon. And it's, 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 you know. They've, they've done some interesting things on some rivers where the Elwah, they pulled the dams out of there. They're seeing, already seeing improved results. They've done some estuary work on the Snohomish, I think it is, up by Everett, seeing results, you know. But but limited, there's a limit as to how much of that they can do.
They pulled down a dam on the Little Swan, I think, or Little Salmon.
Little white salmon.
Yeah, little little white salmon. The dam came out in April and that fall, salmon were back. It had been shut down for a hundred years. And the salmon made it back after a hundred years' absence. It's stunning.
Yeah. They're colonizers, so. Well, that's my, any other questions?
Well, we've kept them for about an hour and a half if we have something quick, yeah.
I haven't had, never had the opportunity to speak to somebody who knows so much about salmon, so I want to take this opportunity, so thank you. I missed the first ten minutes of your presentation. So are the dams that have fish ladders, are those impacting the fish returns?
Ye- yes, you can actually, I didn't, there are tables that show passage loss going upstream. Besides passage loss coming downstream. So you're losing fish at both, in both directions at the dams. Pretty significant numbers in some, except in one case, you're talking about smolts and millions of smolts going out. The other one, you're talking about thousands of fish in hundred thousands returning, so, but but there is loss in both directions and.
Are you familiar with the Quinault River and how the Indians operate that, how the tribe operates that river?
Yeah, I know where the Quinault is. I don't know a lot about the river.
So that river is, they they've taken brood stock steelhead. And their philosophy is, we're going to, they have a hatchery there and they breed as many of them as they can and they put out as many as they can. And to catch a twenty pound steelhead on that river is not uncommon. I mean, they probably do that daily on that river. And there are fishing trips where you can go and you can catch ten, fifteen steelhead in a two-hour trip. When, when I look at that, what what the tribe has done with that river, now they charge you to go there and you have to go with a guide and, you know, you can't just go fish this river. When I look at the results that they have on that river, I I just ask myself, why are we not applying that same concept? And I go back to some of my original questions. If if the hatcheries are the answer, as Commissioner, or one of the answers. And rivers that we currently have hatcheries, why are we not just unloading as many fish as we can out into the rivers? Because I, you hear old timers talk about back in the day, the salmon were so thick that you could walk across their backs prior to hatcheries. So I don't understand the 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 science where we say the river can't handle that many fish. When in back, prior to hatcheries being introduced, the native runs were that thick in the, on the river. And, you know, I I've seen twenty pound salmon go up six inches of water for a hundred yards. So I don't understand, that, I just, if you have that answer, great. If you don't, I understand that too. But it's just something that that I ask myself all the time, why are we not producing as many fish as we can on these hatcheries?
Well, once again, that the the number of fish that can be produced is limited by the National Marine Fisheries Service on its impact on listed stocks. So, because there is a, it's understood, I guess you could say that, that. That hatchery abundance can have an impact on how many, on the, on the recovery of wild fish. If you, if you have way too many hatchery fish and you're, they're either going to overspawn. And cause the problem you mentioned earlier of too many hatchery fish, more hatchery fish than they want on the spawning grounds. Or else, if you try to harvest them, you're going to impact more wild fish. So, because they're mingled with the hatchery fish. And so in the Columbia, where we have all these ESA listed stocks. The National Marine Fisheries Service limits that. On the Quinault, where it's, where the tribes, I think, control it, they have their own biologists. And they work in consultation with the state and the Fed agencies. But they don't necessarily have to do it the way they want, you know, they they can do it their own way. And I just, I just don't have a good answer.
Are the, are the people on this board?
Another, another factor, another factor you might remember is that the Quinault does not have. A Seattle or a Tacoma or Portland, Oregon, just spoiling the water. It's, the water's pretty pristine and natural. That's, that's, when we talk about habitat, that's the kind of habitat we want. Where it's, where it's feasible, and it isn't feasible in many places. They're not going to build salmon spawning streams in downtown Seattle. It's just not going to happen again.
Well, no, I I totally get that, but on the rivers that we currently have hatcheries on, I just don't under. I'm trying to under, are the people on this board that you're talking about, are they appointed or how how do you get to sit on this board? This National Marine Board of Fisheries that decides what native fish are and aren't?
Well, the National Marine Fisheries Service is a part of NOAA. And so they're employees of the. Federal employees, and I don't know, I I don't, I can't answer that completely in terms of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I I'd.
One of the frustrating things that I know from my perspective, and I'm, you know, I'm not a trained scientist by any means. We've been told that it doesn't count in protecting endangered species. If you count hatchery fish, that's, that's the part that doesn't make any sense. Because, and I don't know whether it was a series of lawsuits where judges said, the law doesn't allow that. I don't, and I don't know, but we just keep getting told hatchery fish don't count for saving the salmon.
There, there are so many things that I look at and I'm so grateful for all your information. You really, I learned quite a bit today. Thank you. There's so many things like what you said, Commissioner, that just don't make any sense. Where did, where did we get the genetic spawn to start the hatchery program? From native fish. So I, it's just, I often wonder if the intention really is to. To increase the the fish output and to restore the habitat as opposed to certain political agendas that might be involved.
I know that the twenty years, I've been on the board close to twenty years because I served on it, representing the cities. What we know now compared to twenty years ago has changed enormously as well. And it's like, we're we're inventing the plane while we're invent, I mean, we're flying the plane while we're inventing it, you know, it's. So that that's been part of the, you know, you try a whole bunch of different things. The the mega rivers were a test, the creeks were a test at one time. Three roughly parallel streams and they tried different methods of stimulating. Stimulating, improving, improving habitat. At at one point, they were grinding up frozen fish and spraying, spreading them out. Because the fish will, will, they're carnivores, so. That seemed to be more work than it was worth because most of it washed down the stream, but.
They've also taken hatchery surplus and 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 planted, you know, put it back in the streams. Because as they, as they deteriorate, organisms consume them that become food for fish, you know. So there's, there's, there, that's something they didn't do years ago and they, they're doing that now. It's, I I don't know any biologists who who don't want to see more fish. You know, I mean, that's, one of the biggest problems is that they don't, I don't think they prepare students. In fisheries for what we do on the Columbia in such a complicated, heavily managed fishery. Where you, you, you're, the ones that I see coming out of college are overwhelmed by what goes on here. They don't understand commercial fishing, they don't understand ESA listings, they don't understand any of that. And it's, so it's a huge learning curve just to gain them up to speed. And a lot of the, of the people who grew up with that, who were closer to my age, are retiring. And so we're losing that kind of knowledge base that we used to have in in fisheries management. And it's a, it takes a long time to, to get that, to, to. To re, reacquaint people with that.
Well, thank you for your information today.
No, like I said, I love to talk about salmon. If they have any questions, I'd be happy to provide sources for anything I gave that, that I'm a data guy and I like to have facts. And so I tried to put that in there best I could.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah, we very appreciate your time. Took an hour and a half of your, your time. Very much appreciated.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And you can, if you, Kelly has the the slide set, so you're welcome to use it as you choose. If you want to look it over again tonight.
Thank you. The other thing we had, there she is. That's twice, that's worked. Now, you're pretty excited, aren't you?
Kelly, that's, that's our first successful.
Actually, the second. Okay.
Kathy Funt Baxter, Finance Director. Oh, I have something to hand out. Not as exciting as salmon.
Or as tasty.
The, the reason I looked over after one of the, near, near the end was he said the Quinault. He had all the advice and they're under the control, but they do what they want.
Yeah.
I'm like, what a concept.
I know it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, this is our budget amendment. It will be on the public, it will be at the. Public meeting for Tuesday, next Tuesday. But it's pretty extensive. And so normally, we would talk about agenda items on Monday, the day before. But I've, I slotted myself on for this workshop time in order to give you a little bit more time. Just in case you have questions. The first section, of course, is the changes to the general fund. The good news is that on the general fund, all changes that are here, revenue and expenses. Met out to ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars change. That's, that's it. And so then I'll just kind of go down some of the, some of the major things. On the commissioner's expense, we are, we have the ability to code with the bars coding. To separate out those costs and expenses for public information. And so that's what we're trying to attempt to do here is to split out some of the expenses in the commissioner's expenditure area. Between those that are for public information. So we have some personnel costs that are going down in the bars related to commissioner area. And increase in public information area. And then we have a few additional expenses in total, about nine thousand dollars of. Increased expenses that weren't anticipated when we did the budget. Some of those are, for example, an additional phone in the office. Some additional conferences for staff this year. And some additional printing and binding costs related to code publication, publishing. So, and then some additional expenses for the Public Information Office activity increases. Are there any questions about that?
The direct labor is an example. You just made a different breakdown.
Yes, we just made a different allocation. So for example, all of Shani, who's in the office, her expense is related to public information. So she's a hundred percent now public information coding and fifty percent of Bailey.
How do I know this from the bars since all the numbers in the three first columns are the same?
So on the bars, you'll notice that you have five, one, one, six thousand.
Oh, those are different.
And then you go down to where we now have. Yeah, so that, so it's a little bit different bars, but it it provides us a better mechanism and way to track some of these expenses. Particularly for budgeting purposes.
Yeah.
So really, these adjustments are are improvements to tracking.
Right, right.
So what you've done on the resolution column is really done the. The bottom line for each of the categories, perfect.
So just in total, like I said, there's about nine thousand dollars of actual adjustment for things that were unanticipated. So the next item is in our treasurer's area. And both, we're looking and going to ask for permission to have. An additional nine thousand dollars annual expense for software. And this has to do with a program for helping us better manage our debt managements. And it's currently, it's called Debt Book, and we currently are using this software. In our auditor's office for the leases and for the subscription-based items. And so there, excuse me, they use a module. And this is to add an additional module for, particularly for debt and for the bonds, bonds payments and tracking. What we like about it is, and it'll also help for me for budgeting. And so between the three offices, we'll be able to utilize this additional module. To be more efficient and effective. And and we'll also be able to allow access to a number of users to be able to see their bonds. Related to the school districts, some of the special districts. And I think Deborah Garner commented the treasurer that she has about thirty-one different bonds. That she's managing payments for. And so this would make their job much easier and more efficient.
So I'm a little unclear on the treasurer's obligation. Did she needs to manage the bonds for all, for the school districts?
She manage, she manages, she's on here right now, so she manages, I won't speak for her, but I know she manages the payments. The timely payments and the tracking. but I know she manages the payments, the timely payments and the tracking of all of those, um, issuances that they, that they have.
And QuickBooks won't, won't do it for you, Deborah?
We don't use QuickBooks. So I don't know, um, but yes, um, Debt Book.
I mean, nine thousand is a lot of money and I assume that's another thousand a year for maintenance?
No, this, this is the total cost, um, it's a cloud-based system. Um, and it's the total annual cost for utilization of the system.
So next year is another nine thousand?
Yes, and they're offering a three-year contract, um, for the price. Um, we would like, at a later date, we were probably going to come back to you and ask for that, the two contracts to be put together. They're, they also offered to put the contract for the auditor's office and our contract for the treasurer's office together as one contract and to make it more efficient to manage that as well.
And this software is really for an internal function in the treasurer, has no tendrils going outside?
I don't, I don't believe so.
I, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Very, I'm very careful about software that has to interface with other software. And this sounds like it's really something you keep in your office for your management purposes, has nothing to do with anybody else.
Correct. Um, right now, we, um, we're tracking all of this just in an, uh, access database, but it doesn't give us all the information, um, that this would. We would be able to interface with PeopleSoft to do the journal entries that we do for these bond payments.
That's where I'm more cautious. We would be able to means that at some point you're going to ask us for a consultant to.
No.
Do the interface?
No.
It's already there?
It's included in that they will, they will program it so we can pull the data out of there the way we need it to upload into PeopleSoft.
And they guarantee that into the future.
Kaylee McKay in the auditor's office, I can touch a little bit on this because we use it for the leases and speed aside. Um, so when we say, I don't, I don't know the interface is the appropriate word. Um, it will not, the PeopleSoft and Debt Book will never touch each other. So what Debt Book does is we can export what we need and then we only upload into PeopleSoft our journal entries and things like that. They won't ever be connected together and just sharing information and have access to each other, if that's what you're, um, referring to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's not what it does.
And that will happen, uh, you don't manually transfer the numbers, you, you, you upload or?
Yes.
So you just decide this is the data I want and boom. I have seen in the past people entering the data by hand again from a printed sheet and I was hoping we weren't doing that still.
Nope.
So it sounds like the auditor is in on, on this also.
Yes, I, I think in the end, all three of our offices, the treasurer's office, my office and the auditor's office can utilize this software to help us do a better job that we're, we're trying to accomplish, all of us.
So, so each, all three departments will end up spending nine thousand a year for the license, licensing?
It's nine thousand in total and all three of us will utilize that same access, that same module.
So you, you have three thousand to kick in.
Well, and it, and it has, um, unlimited users, so, uh, Public Works has like pub- public work trust fund loans, they would be able to log in there and look at that, that data as well. And we could give it, it, when we have a new bond and we will upload all of our old bond information in there, so all the resolutions and the documents will be in there. The debt service schedules, we'll be able to run reports. We want to know how much money's going out on December first, we'll easily, but easily be able to run reports. And it will also, for Kaylee's side, it also helps, um, with some of the notes that she has to do for the financial statements. So it has that feature in it as well. And right now, yeah, we're tracking this on different spreadsheets and, you know, doing all sorts of things to get all this information into, um, PeopleSoft. As we do it now, um, this would, you know, definitely be more efficient and it would, it would be nice.
So my, my only question is why wouldn't IT be the one covering these expenses? It sounds like lots of different departments would, would benefit from using this computer program. Is, is that what their reserve is designed to do to provide the software needs for multiple departments?
Well, may- maybe, I, I don't know that, but.
I mean, I'm assuming unless there's a way of generating revenue, it's all coming from the general fund.
Well, it could, could it be included in the IT fee and allocated out? I, you know, I don't know.
I would say that, um, I can speak to the leases and speed aside and that is countywide. So if IT did take that over, I wouldn't see a problem with that being part of their cost allocation plan. Um, debt would be a little more difficult with that piece because it does include the special purpose districts, um, which are not part of the IT cost allocation plan, so we wouldn't be able to spread that cost. But we could use the, the, um, cost from the two modules that we utilize that is, um, on behalf of the entire county in the IT cost allocation.
But I know when the auditor provides services for other local governments, there's a fee that she charges.
Uh, it used to be that way, um, the special purpose districts, actually, we no longer do that as of, I want to say about two or three years ago, we stopped, um, they, uh, they, um, found a way to not, I'll let Carolyn speak to that.
She was doing such a good job, I wasn't going to interrupt. That was the, uh, what I inherited when I became auditor. And one of the fire districts locally challenged that process and we had a legal review of the process. And just like the treasurer, when it comes to providing the services to the junior taxing districts, there are things that I'm obligated to do in statute and I cannot charge them. And so we stripped down the services that we were providing to just those that I am mandatorily obligated to provide. And those, basically issuing warrants, that's what the auditor's office does and we can't charge them for that. And, you know, we, we're the bank, we, um, we do a lot of work for the districts that we can't charge them for. They, we pay their, their bond payments. We redeem their warrants, we, we do, we can charge for the investment fees. So we do, um, charge for, that's the only thing we can charge for is, um, the investment fees.
Okay.
What, do you want me, would you like me to look at putting this on the, as a general purpose software for the IT?
It's a good question, but I'm not the one that would go on either side of that.
I, I think we've got a policy for dealing with software and IT information. So if it fits the po- fa- policy to have it go through them, yes. If it isn't, you know, if it doesn't fit, I'd.
Then don't, yeah.
Yeah, so I have to look at.
Yeah, my, my only concern with this particular nine thousand was exactly the fact that it's thirty-one, um, of our, of our bonds. I don't know how much is not, um, countywide. Or whatever.
Well, it's all countywide, I mean, they're all Callis County local districts, so. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not saying don't, don't spend the money, it's just a matter of.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do a little research.
Yeah, I don't have a problem going forward with it.
Yeah, I, I, I think you, the auditor and the treasurer have shown excellent judgment on where to put things. Have it your way.
Okay.
It's gone with our and then, we're done.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next one is my office and, um, we, we provide the mail services. And when we did the budget this year, we, we, we noticed that mail services was over in an internal service fund. And that was fine, but they don't really generate any revenues, so we moved them over to the general fund. And I missed a few items that we need to account for, for their expenses. They were still stuck over in the internal services fund and that's a total of two thousand four hundred dollars.
That'll break the bank every time. I think, I, I think it was tied in with the print shop.
Right, and you, you don't have the print shop generating any revenue to cover the, all of those expenses. It was, so, um, and then human resources.
Wait, just one quick question, uh, do we have, do we have a new person in, uh, in the mailroom or?
Not, not new, um, Dana Teia, and she's been with us since last, last year.
Seen her in a while, so I was wondering.
Yeah, she's here. She works, she only works about eighteen hours a week. Um, we also have, uh, human resources, um, and so they have a summer help position. And they're wanting to offset the, that expense, um, because, um, they also have a anticipate some reduction in labor cost, um, due to someone being out on, um, leave. And so that's, that's for that.
In that case, just for my own clarification, uh, you bring it out because you have to or you, you, what's the impetus for even ma- making the change? It's labor.
Yeah, well, right now, um, we, we still have direct labor as a restricted budget item. And so that budget capacity is not available to, for other expenses.
Got it.
Unless approved by the board. Um, the next one is, it's a similar issue, they are reduced, they had a, um, during a position opening, um, this is in purchasing. And so they've had to, um, do some other, they wanted to move part of that to cover some other expenses um, for, because they have a backfill, uh, position. And that's four thousand dollars. Civil service, um, they had, had a, an old laptop or an old computer and it, once the person, um, left us that had previously been in that position, it was unable to be, continued to be used. And so they brought in a new hire and so they're purchasing a new laptop for twenty-five hundred dollars. And then the sheriff's office have quite a few different expenses, um, that we're making adjustments on. Um, in total, it's, it's third, it's about fourteen thousand dollars. Um, but some of that is covered, um, by a, a Department of Commerce grant uh, called Star Chase, um, but they have different items. I mean, we've, we had some items that were ordered in twenty-three, but they didn't hit till twenty-four. So therefore they had to increase this year's budget, but last year's budget rolled into general fund. Um, and we had some, um, new hires that were actually at a s- lower step than the previous, so that was a reduction. And we had, um, we were utilizing the wrong rate in the budget for the sheriff deputies. And we discovered that and that's about a fifty-two thousand dollar savings, um, to the budget. And, um, just some various expenses there. Any questions?
I was just looking ahead to see if there were anywhere, we were in the plus column.
In the revenue, in the revenue, we do have some plus, that's, that's, um, an area that we do. It's offsetting some of these expenses. Probation expense, if I, if I, if you're ready for me to continue on probation, um, we had some increase, request for increase in overtime. They're offsetting it by moving extra help payroll to cover that, that ten thousand dollars. And then they have some additional ancillary expenses related to personnel, um, which is about two thousand four, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. The jail, um, jail expenses, we, this, this, this budget amendment reflects, um, the, um, collective, two collective bargaining agreements that were settled um, later this year, and so that was, um, the guild and that affects the jail expenditure budget. Um, so we've got an increase there of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Um, we had some positions that we eliminated, cooks. And we needed, we didn't reduce the medical expenses on those. And so we're able to take advantage of reducing that to offset some of those costs. And we also had to use some corrected, uh, contribution rates for the retirement. We didn't have those in this, their particular budget correctly.
How does that retirement work there? So, uh, next year's budget, we'd see something in excess of four fifty-seven K?
Yes. So those retirement rates are set by the state, um, every, and they set them on a, typically on a yearly basis.
The corrections officers are left pensioners, right? Law enforcement.
I'm, I'm not sure. I know that, um, I know that, I'm not sure.
In any event, thi- this is the, this is like going into the impressed account, uh, for retirement.
Yes, yes, and this is the employer expense portion. Um, so part of that is because there's an increase in the salaries, there's going to be a corresponding increase in the, uh, retirement. Cause it's a percentage of wages. Um, offender services, um, they, they are needing, and this, this may have been a budget key puncher, I don't know, but um, it's forty thousand dollars for extra help on the payroll, um, side that they needed. And so that's what the majority of their increase relates to is extra help. Superior Court, um, this is just basically the Hall of Justice Security, um, project grant. Um, it really needed to be in a capitalized expenditure code. And we had put it in other when we did the budget and so, um, I'm just moving it from that to the capital expense line. The next two are to record the contributions that were previously approved, um, for IT to provide fifty thousand dollars for that grant to cover some of the cost. And also from the capital improvements account for fifty thousand to cover some of the lock, uh, locking mechanisms. The, um, clerk's expense, uh, budget is increasing by ten thousand nine hundred dollars. And this is because additional workstations related to some additional hires that were approved or during the budget cycle. And then as well, their computers for their new positions. The Office of Public Defender, um, this was extra help, I believe this is, it says rule nine, but I think it's an intern type position and that was previously bought, brought to the board, uh, for approval. Um, so this is just recording the budget impact of that. They also have, um, a lease, an outside lease, um, and they're anticipating, um, I believe their, I believe facilities is assisting them in finding, trying to find a location to move to. Um, but until then, uh, they have an rent escalation clause and that carries them through December. That was about twenty-two thousand dollars for those months. Then in, um, coroner's expense, they have a, a grant, um, that will help offset some expenses, um, for a strike. um, for a striker unit. Um, they, the grant will offset about 61, almost $62,000 of that $79,000. And then they just have some general repairs and maintenance that were unanticipated when they put the budget together. And a small increase in their photocopy budget. This next one is non-departmental expense, and when it's for the Lear, for the uh, law enforcement records, um, billings, and these are done quarterly. Um, when law enforcement records has any type of increase in their expenses, they bill out all of their expenses to um, Callowits and the different um, entities that they have agreements with. And so this is to reflect um, the portion that's related to Callowits. And it's basically, when we did the budget, um, we I I didn't anticipate as many increases as they had. Um, but they had increases due to their new contracts. And they also had increases, I believe there was one additional position that was added um, over from what we previously had. I think it was just moved from one department to another.
That's see, that seems like a huge number to have overlooked.
It it is a, it is a large number. And so um, I'll work more closely with with that department in looking at their budget. I have to, we have to look at their budget before we can anticipate this budget is.
But law enforcement records is overseen by the sheriff who has a financial director. What's what happened?
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure. I think it's on my, it's probably on my end because I wasn't familiar with how those two accounts work and that um, I I just wasn't as familiar with that billing system and what would impact it, so. Then are any other questions on that? Um, the professional services um, for the Conservation District was previously approved for the board. It's $100,000. You had previously approved for it in a different budget year. Um, but they their work was delayed due to permitting, and so now it needs to be in this fiscal year. And so that's this, this is to put that expenditure in this fiscal year. Uh, the next item is uh, non-departmental expense, and this is a reduction of some of these line items. We had placeholders pu- put in place for the sheriff's clerks and the Corrections Guild contracts. And so th- this is utilizing those funds to offset some of those increases for COLAs. Then the next item is non-departmental, and this is a transfer out to the Budget Stabilization Fund. Um, this was a, this was part of the approved budget, so we have it in the approved budget. But I I missed the other side of the entry, which was the transfer out of the general fund.
I've lost the page number. We're on page five?
Four.
I'm four, I'm sorry. We're on page four. Towards the bottom.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Um, and then the next one is the Parks and Recreation uh, expenditure accounts. And you previously approved um, $100,000 from ARPA for, I believe it's for a pavement of a I'm not sure if it was a tennis court or basketball, yeah.
redoing the basketball court.
Right.
At Riverside.
So that 100,000 is coming from ARPA, and then we need to increase their expense so they have budget capacity to perform that work. The next one is your LT1 um, category. And so um, we're reducing this budget because we're no longer needing all of this budget for LT1. That's about $36,000. Then the that that concludes all the expenditures on general fund expenditures. Then we have um, offsetting uh, those increases. We have re- new revenues or or estimates for revenues. Um, and there's various categories. And so some of these are grants um, that are coming in, our new contracts. For example, the Kelso uh, animal control contract, uh, the Stryker Grant, 61, almost $62,000. Uh, this next item, pretty large miscellaneous revenue, $496,000. It's, it was not in the budget where uh, the bond payment for the PFD funds were. But they reimburse us for their portion of those bo- bonds, a portion of them. So that was not placed in our budget. So it's $496,000 of revenue. And then a couple of these other ones are just looking at what's already come in for the year. And based upon what we budgeted, just um, firming up our our actuals to budget. And so there's close to $100,000, um, well, actually more than that. Almost 200, 300,000 dollars just in those alone. Then we have some additional transfers in because we relooked at our um, behavioral health transfers. And we just made sure that they were um, transfers in and transfers out are matching. And so there's um, probably about seven entries to take care of that. Um, we also had recorded some transfers for Drug Court um, as transfers in. Um, and then we also had the Hall of Justice um, Capitol and uh, Hall of Justice from IT as transfers in. And then the ARPA funds are transfers in as well, recorded as revenue. And then we also had an insurance reimbursement from our pool that I our our Washington um, anyway, our WCR pool and I didn't, we didn't anticipate it in the budget, but it was an insurance reimbursement for a previous um, HVAC loss. There was a stolen HVAC equipment, I believe. And so we, that claim was put in, we finally received the funds on that. It was 99, almost $99,000.
The significance of the color change in the middle, that's just.
Say that, I didn't hear that.
Uh, the significance of the color change in the middle uh, under the column amended budget. Three fifths of the way down, the 248,430, it's a different color.
I don't know why it's a different color. I'll I'll have to look at it.
Okay.
I don't recall anything at that, that's the number. And you would think if it's red, it's it's a negative. And it's in the revenue, it would be negative revenue. So I don't, it's not a negative revenue. Yeah. I'm not sure. It may be one that we wanted to double check.
Yeah.
Okay, page six. Um, now this gets into other special item funds, special funds, um, county roads. Um, so here it nets out to a zero. Um, we've got some increases in expenses and some decreases in other areas. And a decrease in fund balance of 1.3 million dollars. But I believe these were previously um, reviewed. Um, Mike probably brought to your attention, they're doing some additional overlay. And so they need, they need to um, shift some budgets around, and so that was 2 million dollars. And then they had some promotions and some overlapping um, higher um, needed for retirement, and so that increased some of their personnel cost. They, other, on roads, they didn't have anything else major um, other than some chemical um, spray chemical increase expenditures for the year that they needed of 25,000. The next items on the sheet on page six all have to do with rural county public facilities. And this is um, when I did the presentation to for you on rural public facilities, and we talked about new awards. Um, we had, I went back and I was adjusting their beginning fund balance because it was understated to the tune of about 2 million dollars. So these are fixing the beginning fund balances, and then that correspondingly has a impact on ending fund balance. And then um, also.
On that, it seems strange that it's exactly 2 million.
Well, it's just an estimate.
It's an estimate at this point.
Yeah, the actual, yeah, so it's an estimate.
Okay.
The um, and then when we have our awards, we increased our awards this year. And so we needed to increase our uh, budget capacity um, to award those, and that's the 2.7 million dollars. Um, we also, and then we decreased our fund balance um, like 2.3 million dollars. The next one is an item that it was a late, it's being a late submission. It's for Woodland Scott Hill Park. Um, they're requesting funding um, and their applica- they've gotten their application in for rural public funds. A rural public facilities funds. Um, this is continuation of projects um, they previously had requested money for um, a sports complex um, that they're continuing to try to finish out. And will provide economic impact for um, Woodland. And that's $50,000. So that's the budget capacity in in order to allow us to award that in the next. And I don't know when, but soon, when I can get that submitted for but for um, for for consent agenda item.
That that was out of the investment earnings, right?
Um, well, we do have some investment, yes, we have some investment earnings income.
But we moved that up to pay, to make that payment.
Right, right. So you'll see, you'll see below, we also have some revenue adjustments um, to make our budget closer to actuals, and 50,000 is investment earnings. I'm going to page seven, um, for Federal Forest, uh, Title III Revenue and Expense. Um, we have, in the budget, we had only anticipated 11,000 for revenue and expense. And uh, we actually received enough to uh, for 20,000. And so we're adjusting both sides of that revenue and expense. And then some of these others are um, like the this veterans relief expense, they're adjusting some of their um, their ending fund balance, um, trying to true it up a little bit more, and then adjusting their their lease expense uh, by $4,000. Um, they also had provided some additional, which with, which is basically net impact of zero. They're shifting some salaries and staff cost um, in their uh, human services. Their substance abuse expenditure um, categories, and but they're offsetting it with reduction in other lines. Then we have um, our uh, behavioral and mental health tax. Um, and so on this one, they're reducing, um, this was, this was one where we had originally had anticipated continuing a contract with Columbia Wellness for the Sheriff's Office. Um, but then later, a decision was made um, to hire staffing versus doing the third-party contract. So this is, this is impacting the budget to shift those funds elsewhere and to transfer them out. Um, also some additional transfers out that we talked about over on the general fund of $95,000. On page eight, um, again, there's um, that's a small increase, it's offset, um, that was to 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 for the health specialist. Whoops. Health specialist, um, behavioral, mental and behavioral specialist in the sheriff's office, uh, showing the transfer out. Um, then the next one is the Health Department and it's shifting staff cost with other health um, services funds. And the net impact is zero. The um, tourist facilities expense and revenue, um, these are some items that um, we didn't account for uh, when we were doing the budget, the original budget, so items missed. Um, particularly related to a large grant, they needed that line item. And then also um, a new estimate on some of their revenues, increasing their revenues to offset those expenses for 183,000. Um, also that one had the Cougar Rest Area cleaning in it, and that was previously approved by the board. So this is just giving them the budget capacity to get that done. Page nine.
The 20K is gonna, is what it will cost this estimate to the end of the year.
Through the end of this year, yes. Um, page nine, um, we have um, Boat Safety Fund, um, they they are requesting a reduction, um, let's see, they're they're requesting a reduction of ending fund balance. Um, because they're anticipating a reduction in some of their revenues. And then we have low-income housing, they're doing some s- staff, they're shifting some staff cost between professional services and direct labor. It's offset, it comes to zero. It's a zero budget impact. Um, the sheriff is anticipating some additional funds coming in miscellaneous revenue contributions to help their K-9 program. And so they would like to increase some of their expenses related to uh, maintaining those um, the service animals, their canine animals. The law and justice, um, they have, they're requesting, but they're offsetting it. Um, they requested, and I think this was previously approved at a Board of Commissioner meeting uh, for some promotions, but it was offset by um, some other direct labor cost. And then they had some expenses related to overtime, and so they'd like to reduce one of their other labor categories in order to cover the overtime expenses. So it's really a net zero. Um, law and justice expense related to um, there were some adjustments for um, law enforcement records, after-hours fund. Um, and then um, there was a transfer out that was in the budget, but it's not needed, it's not necessary. So we're removing that budget.
Wasn't there a $310 adjustment for law enforcement earlier on, what, page five or something?
Well, that that was the amount that they need to bill non-departmental for the Callowits portion of law enforcement. Um, and this is law and justice expense. This one is not the law. The Lear is law enforcement records.
Yes, yes. I mean, I I know that the other one was also law enforcement records.
Yes, and so this is law.
That's like a half a million dollar expenditure in law enforcement records. That wasn't part of our budget. Or am I missing something?
No, um, it it wasn't in our budget and for the non-departmental fund to pay, pay law enforcement records. When I, I think one. When I, I think.
I guess I'm maybe, maybe it's too late in the afternoon. But they submitted a budget that we approved, and yet it went up half a million dollars? That's why we're making the adjustment?
No, I don't think that's, that's the explanation. Their budget did not go up half a million dollars. The court, where they're billing, they recorded expenses and revenues on law enforcement records. But then on those that they're billing, which is the non-departmental account, we did not catch that our portion of that bill was going up as much as it did. And so we didn't budget in the general fund enough to cover their increased expenses.
But the expenses went up half a million dollars? Three hundred dollars, three hundred thousand, you know, earlier?
In general fund, yes.
From this revenue source? Or are we talking about the same money, just kind of?
I'll have to look at it, I have to look at it again. But, but I think on their side, they, their expenses did go up, but not half a million dollars. Not, it's three hundred thousand, basically. And so, but on the general fund, we did not budget enough to cover what they were going to bill us. So I have something in place that I'm going to do next time because their revenue, their revenue on the law enforcement records has to come from somewhere. Some of it is from the outside, some of it is from internal. And that's the part that we didn't get in sync, the internal part that they're going to be collecting from general fund.
That's something that should have come over from them, that's their, they should have been pretty clear on that.
Yeah, and so it just wasn't part of our, it wasn't very clear in our process. And I'm going to improve the process. Okay, we're, I'm on page thirteen. And so liability claims revenue, we have an eighty-one thousand dollar increase in revenue. That's because we have a claim that for the motor, it's actually on page twelve, on the bottom of page twelve, that we're getting eighty-one thousand dollars in from the risk pool. But we also have eighty-one, over eighty-one thousand that we need to pay for those cleaning expenses to that fire at the motor pool or the fleet operations. So it's an offset, we have increased expenses and we have increased revenue. The next area for liability claims, we have a, we have increased expenses this year, particularly for litigation and settlements. And so we're anticipating we're going to need about eighty-two thousand dollars more in expense. And we're going to fund that from a transfer from the risk pool fund balance. Because my, our liability claims has no fund balance available right now. This next one is the law enforcement records. And this is where some of their expenses have gone up from what they provided in the budget related to their settlement of their new contracts. And then as a result, they have to increase their revenues for their billings. But like I said, it's not going up in the same dollar amount as what the general fund did. You can see it's going up about maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They also, in addition to the new contracts, they submitted a budget increase because they're needing to hire an overlap for two months due to a retirement in one of their positions. And so that's a total of about, impact fourteen thousand dollars. But they're taking, they're covering that from fund balance. And then on page fourteen, the last, the last page, we have law enforcement records. This was the one where they had, they reduced their a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was the transfer that they no longer need. So that was it.
Did you talk about the opioid fund?
Oh, I should have, did I skip over that page?
I think we skipped a couple of pages, ten and eleven, I think.
Oh, my gosh. So sorry. Yeah, I grabbed, grabbed too many pages. Okay, on page ten, we are taking and increasing the revenue to equal what we've received so far this year. This is making budget equal actuals. And that is, that's an adjustment of one point, almost one point six million dollars. And then correspondingly, we're increasing the fund, fund balance because to reflect that same amount and based upon the settlements we actually received.
And are we expecting one more payment this year? Or I can't remember if we've gotten all.
I'm not sure if there's one for July one. But, but we're also still investigating signing the Kroger settlement. That one, I believe, hasn't been settled yet. And then there are some. The last payment we got was like the nine hundred thousand from the Johnson and Johnson or the Jansen settlement.
That's the seventeen-year annual payment.
Well, that one is a lump sum. That one, you get it in, and so that's what's confusing also about this whole thing is some of the settlements under the pharmacies were, some of them were lump sums, some were not. The Johnson and Johnson was lump sum. Your distribution, your first set of settlements, which was a total of three point something million, that one is over seventeen years. And that was the only one that they released an actual distribution table to tell you exactly how much you're getting every year. It goes from one seventy-seven to two hundred in the later years. So, yeah, it's, it's interesting. So I'm not, I'm not sure if we're going to get additional this year or not. I don't know what the Kroger amount is. And I would believe that Gina, Gina and them have maybe a better handle on that. But I can look, I have access to look in the portal. And then, yes, and I did miss some other big ones here because y'all, y'all had approved, previously approved, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the water sewer meter replacement. That's being funded from ARPA. And then again, here's the ARPA dispersment of a hundred thousand for the basketball tennis courts in the park. And then on the capital expense improvement category fund, they're wanting to reallocate some of those projects. And they want to allocate a hundred and fifty thousand to the roof reallocation for the annex and reduce the allocation for the jail right now. And then we have some expenses that we anticipate at the Hall of Justice, twenty-five thousand dollars because they're going to replace some carpet over at the jury room. So that, that resulted in a total of putting back to fund balance four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which I assume will be coming back to us next year because they'll eventually put the jail roof back on the list to, to have that worked on. And then this, this next one was basically capital, that was the contribution for facilities Hall of Justice Security Door Project. And then the next two just show the revenue coming in from ARPA for the water sewer. And then the, and adding it to the construction expenditure budget. So sorry, I missed those pages. Page eleven, let me see, there, oh, yes, of course, Sean.
A little tiny one, a little.
Yeah, a little tiny one that y'all have previously approved already. So this is the six million dollars from the solid waste from the landfill for the methane project, the PUD methane project. And that's taking six million dollars from their fund balance and placing it in an expenditure line to be able to pay, just make those dispersments to the PUD. And then this next one is solid waste. This is the insurance recovery revenue money that we received for our claim for the landfill fire. And then solid waste, this is to correct some balances for transfers in and transfers out that the solid waste had budgeted, so we corrected that so they will be in balance. And then stormwater just had some net, net zero effect. They're moving some funds between labor and a different labor bars category. Information technology, we were going back and looking at some cleanup on their software expense. Their software expense was over budgeted, one point six million. Should be more like around one point three, one point four million. And also to cover some IT consultant increased expenses. And there's a CDI contract that they didn't have enough set aside to cover that full twelve months contract. And then they have a few purchase orders that were ordered in twenty-three, but the expenses didn't show up until twenty-four. So they needed budget capacity on this hardware line for thirty-nine thousand. Then their contribution of the Hall of Justice Door Project for fifty thousand. And then they're in reviewing budget, the budgets, transfers in and transfers out. We also discovered that their budget wasn't adjusted for forty thousand dollars transfer from the auditor's office. So they needed, needed to show that additional revenue. And then previously approved, I think just this week, was a hundred and twenty-five thousand for replacement of fourteen switches. And that's coming from their reserve fund. I think I covered every page now, sorry, so sorry.
It's only money.
Hmm?
It's only money.
It's only money. But trying to do a better job of monitoring everything and also by having the monthly, having our reports that we're doing for each of the departments, that's really helping us to hone in and look at different things, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good job.
Anything else? And like I said, this will be on the public hearing for next Tuesday.
And you'll look into that law enforcement records thing?
I will.
Great, thank you.
Okay, see nothing else? We will adjourn, thank you.